All right, come back to order. And we will have a report on action taken during closed session from the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. There were no reportable actions on the litigation matters and the personnel matter was continued till the next meeting.
And now, our invocation. If you'd all please rise.
Gracious God, thank you on behalf of all gathered here tonight, on behalf of our city, for your goodness, for all good gifts come from your hands. Thank you for those who stand before you tonight, who give of themselves to better this community, and who are involved in useful work. I pray you give our mayor and council, our city administrator and staff, the wisdom to govern amid conflicting interests and issues, a confidence in making the best decisions for today and for the future of this community, and the ability to work in harmony even when there's honest disagreement. I ask your wisdom for this council and agenda set before them tonight, and the citizens who may address this council. The words on this podium and in the lobby of this hall are clear: "In God We Trust." May you give us the courage to trust in you all the more, and realize your ways and thoughts are higher and better than ours. We're grateful for the advances, rising hope we sense in our community, and for your hand of blessing on our leadership that make it so. Help us to look for your presence and not your absence, to realize the great and positive things you have done and provided, and not dwell on those that are negative. I ask you once again to protect those who protect us, our police, our fire, and our military, especially those downrange and in harm's way. And as tomorrow begins our Flower Festival, we ask that these will be enjoyable days, safe days, and profitable days for the various groups who rely on funds raised to do their good work in our community. And we pray all these things in your most wonderful name. Amen.
Can you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the chocolate for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I have one presentation that I made on June 5th out here in the courtyard when the proclamation to the Northern Santa Barbara County Special Olympics in honor of the California Special Olympics Law Enforcement Torch Run Day. And they came charging in from Santa Maria and they headed out to Buellton after a quick stop, and it was a great opportunity. I think I have the old agenda. Because I have two present, two proclamations. Where am I on this one? Okay, we'll do the other presentation first. So we're gonna have presentation of a donation from Immeris to the city of Lompoc for the annual Fourth of July event.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience here and at home. As our community is aware, in 2009, we lost the funding for the annual Fourth of July fireworks celebration. This tradition in Lompoc is nearly forty years old and would be considered a tragedy if it was lost. Over the past three years, this community has been fortunate to have businesses and organizations that supported this wonderful family event. In 2009, the community pulled the funds together. In 2010, the Chumash Foundation came to our rescue. In 2011, Immeris, then known as the Seelight Corporation, posed a challenge to the Lompoc community to raise half of the needed funds for the fireworks. Immeris committed to matching every dollar up to $10,000 to ensure an event for 2011. When the community fell short, the Chumash Foundation provided $10,000 to meet the challenge put forth by Immeris, and thanks to the support of both of those entities, the skies were bright in 2011. At the top of this year, Immeris once again put forth the challenge to the Lompoc community to dig deep into their pockets and contribute to an event in 2012. Together, we put the word out, but the donations coming in were merely a drop in the bucket. As of May 15th, we had raised under $2,200, and it simply was not enough, and Lompoc was in danger of losing this community tradition. The clock was ticking, and organizers were unsure if Lompoc would have a Fourth of July fireworks celebration or not. A decision had to be made, and at least another $7,800 had to be raised by June 1st, or this longstanding tradition would come to an end. I'm happy to report by the end of the Business Day on Thursday, May 31st, Lompoc had once
happy and very proud to be able to donate the $10,000 towards the fireworks tradition.
again pulled through. Many individuals, organizations, and businesses stepped up to meet the Immeris challenge.
It's a very important event for our community. We feel that through our community outreach efforts at Immeris, we can use our employees'
The Recreation Division could not do what we do without the support and generosity of this community and the wonderful collaborative partners like Immeris.
passions and their efforts to help the community move forward, and help to fill a need.
Tonight, Sarah Wallin from Immeris is here to match our community's fundraising efforts, and is presenting us with a check in the amount of $10,000.
And so that is what we have done. We have implemented a community outreach program with our, at our facility, where a lot of
Big round of applause here.
our employees are now volunteering out in the community during working hours.
I would like to point out that not only is Immeris contributing to this event financially,
And then, as well as contributing the money for the fireworks, you should be able to keep
$10,000, but their employees will also be at the event, serving as volunteers for face
your eye open for us in the community.
painting and other children's activities.
You'll see a lot of our efforts, and hopefully a lot of the hard work that you'll be able
So please join me in thanking Immeris and Sarah Wallin for being here tonight, and providing
to benefit from. One of the things that we had just recently done was a large cleanup in Ryan Park in preparation
this to match our community's fundraising efforts, and ensure that on Wednesday, July
of the Flower Festival. So we'd just like to let you know that we're here in the community, we're committed to
4th, at Halc Stadium, the skies will be lit up bright.
the community, and you'll be seeing us. So, thank you.
And there he is, John, come on in the back row. Uh-oh, glasses. Pass the gla, yeah, pass 'em on down. Come on, you guys, help out. Yeah. So, the reason this isn't on the agenda is because it didn't occur to the mayor that this was the 60th Flower Festival, even though he'd read it repeatedly. And so then we thought, well, we should do a proclamation, and, you know, especially in view of all the lovely ladies and the great fun we're gonna have. So, whereas this year marks the 60th anniversary of the Lompoc Valley Flower Festival, with its theme, 60 Years of California Dreaming, and whereas the Lompoc Valley Festival Association is a local nonprofit organization that coordinates festive annual community events such as the Spring Arts Festival, the Christmas Parade, and the Flower Festival. These events have provided recreation and entertainment for residents of the Lompoc Valley while also attracting an estimated 100,000 visitors every year. And whereas the Lompoc Valley Flower Festival is our single largest community event, and provides residents, including past residents returning, to share in the special event an opportunity to meet old friends and neighbors. And whereas for 60 years, the Lompoc Valley Festival Association, through its conduction of parades, queen contests, and festivals, has created a multiple, multitude of happy memories for generations of residents. Now therefore, I, John H. Lynn, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby wish to sincerely thank all the members of the Lompoc Valley Festival Association, and commend them for their dedicated service they have provided to the city of Lompoc residents over the last 60 years by providing memorable and cherished events in our community. And now, you both get to make a speech. You first.
Actually, I'll go first.
Yeah, you first.
Because I will be short, sweet, and to the point. Thank you, Mayor Lynn, thank you, city council, for this honor. We truly appreciate it. I hope to see everybody out at the festival on, starting tomorrow. We still are selling pre-sale tickets at the office. You can get a four-day, four-entry pass for $6, which makes it $1.50 a day, or per person, whoever it may be. We're selling those up until 11 o'clock tomorrow, as well as the early buy-ride tickets for $20. So tomorrow, what? You know, back in the boot camp days, my recruits didn't say that. So tomorrow's the last day, we hope we see everybody. We've kind of rolled a lot of our prices back. Our beer tent prices kind of went down this year in celebration of our 60th year. We're having a Kids' Day on Thursday with the YMCA, so we're gonna have the petting zoo out there on Thursday. There's gonna be a bouncy house and a few other games that are gonna be out there, so it'll be a lot of fun. So come out, see us. Free admission till 1:00, not 12:00, 1:00. We, a free day on Wednesday, it'll be free admission until 1:00 o'clock on Thursday and Friday. We've got great entertainment that's coming in, we got the Fossils on Wednesday night. We have Glenn Templeton, who's a country guy, who's coming in on Friday night, pretty big guy, he's even got his own tour bus. Plus, we have Pretzel Logic, who's coming in on Saturday for rock and roll, and a Santana dedicate, or a Santana group that's coming in on Sunday. So, a lot of fun, a lot of fun. So please, come out, join us, celebrate, and support us, we really need it. But I would like to turn it over to Karina Rich, who is proudly sponsored by the Lompoc Coast Lions, as our queen.
I'd just like to say that I am so very honored to have this opportunity to represent Lompoc and the Flower Festival. I am so excited for this upcoming week, and I'm very excited to go through this with all these lovely, wonderful girls, and I hope to see you all at Flower Festival. It's gonna be a lot of fun, and see you all there. Thanks.
And then, and then, more exciting things. A proclamation for the Alpha Literary and Improvement Club Flower Show's 90th anniversary. Who's here from the Alpha Club? They even have a book. So if you haven't, if you haven't gotten your Alpha Club book yet, it's a fascinating history, we were all reading it.
Very good.
Yes, because that's how we learned to write a proclamation about you, we read the book. Whereas this year marks the 90th anniversary of the Alpha Literary and Improvement Club Flower Show, which is considered to be one of the highest-ranking flower shows in California. And whereas the Alpha Literary and Improvement Club Flower Show began in 1922 as a dahlia show and expanded to include all flowers in 1926. And whereas in the early 1950s, the Alpha Literary and Improvement Club Flower Show was a forerunner to what eventually evolved as the Lompoc Flower Festival. And whereas the Alpha Literary and Improvement Club was originally organized in 1898, one year after the city, as the Harmony Club with 27 charter members who were pioneers through their flower shows in helping to establish the city of Lompoc as a well-renowned area of beautiful flowers and flower fields. They were also instrumental in establishing the Lompoc Carnegie Public Library among, I'm sorry, among many other invaluable civic service contributions, and continually provide philanthropic support to citizens throughout our community. And whereas in 1900, two years after their establishment, the club was renamed to the Alpha Literary and Improvement Club, and is now 114 years old, the club remains a pillar of our community and an essential asset in furthering our citizens' education and self-improvement. Now therefore, I, John H. Lynn, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, California, do hereby commend and sincerely thank the Alpha Literary and Improvement Club for continually sponsoring the annual flower show for the past 90 years. They have made significant historical impacts on the foundation of our community, and contributed much-needed civic service and philanthropic support that has helped to promote our citizens' welfare. And now I'd like to invite Council Number Starbuck down, because he participates. Got him. Come on, come on.
Do you want to say anything about the show before we talk?
I've been putting arrangements in the Alpha Club Flower Show for over a decade, and I've got a third place, a second, one time, lots of honorable mentions, and then some looks. So, I have to say that I will have an arrangement there Friday night before 10:00. I'm going for the crystal, ladies.
If we have any input on the judges, we'll make sure that happens. No. We're really excited. I'm Anna Denter, I'm the president, and this is Jeanne McBretney, and Jeanne is our chair, and then Anne Rocher, which you all know, and she's past president, but also a member, you know, currently a member. We are so excited about the new venue. We are going to be at the DeWes Community Senior Center, and the staff there has been very accommodating. We still have room for your arrangements, so I have some schedules here, I'll leave outside. They have the rules, they have everything you need to know about, and you, you know, about the Flower Fest, Flower Show, and, and you still have time to get pre-sale tickets. Jeanne?
Yeah, we will be, our show is Saturday and Sunday. Saturday is from noon to 5:00, and Sunday is noon to 4:00. The awards will be given out at 3:30 on Sunday, and we hope you will all attend, and we hope if you, if you have a beautiful flower in your yard, a specimen, by all means, bring it down. Those are wonderful entries. So look at the schedules, and you just may surprise yourself and see you have something to enter. My husband, a couple years ago, I said, "You have to take that hanging basket down," and he said, "Oh, no." Well, he won first place. So, you know, you never know. So please come down and join us.
That was beginner's luck.
And now that we've had some fun, we'll do a little work. City administrators, report.
Honorable Mayor, city council members, audience and viewers, thank you for this opportunity to provide you a couple of informational status items, as well as some special announcements tonight. First, the city on June 8th received the report of the 2011/12 Santa Barbara County Grand Jury entitled "A Failure of Oversight, Lompoc Housing and Community Development Corporation", in which the city of Lompoc is one of the governmental bodies named and affected. As requested by the grand jury, city staff will respond in writing to the two identified findings and four recommendations in a timely manner, having 90 days to respond. The city's written response will be placed on a future city council agenda earlier than the 90-day requirement, and allow council opportunity to review the response prior to providing the response to the Santa Barbara County Grand Jury. Another item, over the past year, since staff implemented council's direction to post an 11-day draft agenda, staff strives to post that 11-day draft to the regular council agenda in a timely manner. However, tonight's council agenda is posted in the statutory requirement, 72-hour posting rather than the desired 11-day draft posting, and this was primarily due to the volume and complexity of the staff reports, requiring collaborative work between several departments. As well, city attorney, as well, city attorney Joe Panoni was on vacation, but he has returned from vacation, so we're back on schedule for the meeting of July 3rd to be, have an 11-day agenda, draft agenda posting. And I, as council is aware, I will, while I will not be attending the council meeting of July 3rd due to a scheduled vacation, Economic Development Director, Assistant City Administrator Teresa Galavan will be attending that upcoming council meeting on the 3rd in my stead. So now for a few special announcements. It is my pleasure to announce that attending tonight's council meeting is our new Lompoc Fire Chief Kurt Ladapow, and his wife, Mrs. Gail Ladapow, his, their daughter, Kim, and granddaughter, Marissa. And would take this opportunity to introduce them. And Gail, Kim, Marissa, Kurt, you're already standing. Fire Chief Ladapow was recruited from Walshau County, Nevada. He started his fire career as a paramedic, paramedic, excuse me, and has worked as fire chief for the cities of Ukiah and Arroyo Grande, as well as the Fire Protection Districts of Hesperia and Stanislaus Consolidated. He holds the prestigious Executive Fire Officer designation, and has a proven track record of mission-focused leadership. Chief Ladapow will begin work with the city on Monday, June 25th, bringing to Lompoc his great breadth of experience in fire management, and I'm confident he will be an asset to the city of Lompoc, the Lompoc Fire Department team of professionals. So, welcome. Mr. Mayor, council, I would also take this opportunity to acknowledge interim Fire Chief Jeff States for his 28 years of service to the city of Lompoc and the Lompoc Fire Department, and thank him for a job well done as interim fire chief. Jeff States, would you please stand?
I think, I think Jeff needs to come and make a speech. Come on down, Jeff. Come, come on, you gotta say something, and bring the new chief, introduce him, come on. You have, you have social duties now. And you're gonna have a lot more next week. No, no, we're gonna get, we're gonna get a bunny's worth from you.
Do you want me to introduce, this is James Kurt Ladapow, he goes by Kurt, your new fire chief.
Now, that's what I call enthusiastic. Good job. Kurt, would you like to say something? We appreciate you coming tonight.
I'll just make it really brief. I can't tell you how excited my family and I are to be here, and how anxious I am to get to work, and what an honor it is to have the privilege of leading this fine group of your fire professionals.
Chief, did you know there's a parade in your honor coming this Saturday?
Yeah, I thought that was in Jeff's honor, as it's going away.
Councilor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've heard from some of the firefighters, and to really thank Chief States for having worked with them in the last year or so as an interim fire chief, and I've heard from them, and they're very appreciative of your work. So thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I would also announce two appointments made this week. I appointed Public Works Director Larry Bean to succeed interim Utility Director Ron Stasi, effective July 16th. As well, I appointed Assistant Public Works Director, City Engineer Kevin McCune, to succeed Public Works Director Larry Bean, also effective July 16th. Mr. Larry Bean is a registered civil engineer, serving the city of Lompoc over 20 years as city engineer and public works director. I am confident that Mr. Bean will be a strong asset to the utility department, working with a very talented city utility management team to move forward the goals and priorities of the city council. And Mr. Kevin McCune has over 17 years of experience in public works, serving the city of Lompoc as the Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer. Kevin has a civil engineering degree and is a registered professional engineer in California. He is a member of the American Society of Civil Engineers, and is past president of the American Public Works Association Central Coast Chapter. I am confident Mr. McCune will be an asset to the public works department team of professionals, working well with the development community to move forward the goals of the city council. Larry and Kevin, congratulations. And Mr. Mayor and council, while Mr. Ron Stasi retired at the end of this year, we have been fortunate, he was willing to stay on with the city, serving on an interim basis until the selection of his successor. Mr. Stasi has served well the city of Lompoc over nearly five years as utility director. The city has greatly benefited from Mr. Stasi's utility acumen, for which he is well-respected by the city, city council, and his professional colleagues. Mr. Stasi has agreed to stay on through August 10th to provide a smooth transition, and I would acknowledge Mr. Ron Stasi at this time, and for his service to the city of Lompoc. Mr. Stasi, would you stand? Mr. Mayor, I have no other announcements or requests tonight, thank you.
Come on, all three of you, come down. You're not getting out of this. Come on, Larry, Kevin, Ron. I just, you know, want the camera to see you, because they can't see in the bathroom.
What would you like us to say?
No, nothing. First, just to thank Ron, I think maybe a couple of the council members might have something to say.
No, I will thank you. It's been a pleasure to serve as the utility director, made a lot of wonderful friends, and had a good time serving you and the citizens. Thank you.
The only thing I have to say is, I'm a little sad that Ron's gonna get to play a lot more golf than I am.
Yeah, I'm honored for the opportunity, and I appreciate Laurel considering me, and looking forward to learning with Larry still in the job, so it's, it's a perfect situation for me. Thank you, good.
Councilor Starbuck.
Well, I think it's a good fit, and I think it's a good deal for you too, Ron, and I'm glad to see you guys all got the shirt memo, too.
Well, I personally want to thank Ron for all his help in educating me about utilities, so thank you so very much. Appreciate it. Congratulations to everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna go to oral communications. This is an opportunity for you to address the council on any subject. If the subject you want to talk about is further on, further down on the agenda, and you can stay, it's better if you wait and talk to us then, so we don't lose track. And if you want to talk about something that's not on the agenda, or you can't stay, feel free to speak now. I just, you don't want the camera to see you because they can't see you in the bathroom.
What would you like us to say?
No, nothing. First, just to thank Ron, I think maybe a couple of the council members might have something to say.
No, I will thank you. It's been a pleasure to serve as the utility director, made a lot of wonderful friends, and had a good time serving you and the citizens.
The only thing I have to say is, I'm a little sad that Ron's going to get to play a lot more golf than I am.[530.04][530.04](LAUGHTER).
Yeah, I'm honored for the opportunity and I appreciate Laurel considering me and looking forward to learning with Larry still in the job, so it's a perfect situation for me. Thank you, good.
All right. Councilman Starbuck.[549.32][549.32](APPLAUSE).
Well, I think it's a good fit and I think it's a good deal for you too, Ron, and I'm glad to see you guys all got the shirt memo, too.[558.66][558.66](LAUGHTER).
Well, I personally want to thank Ron for all his help in educating me about utilities, so thank you so very much. Appreciate it. Congratulations to everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go to oral communications. This is an opportunity for you to address the council on any subject. If the subject you want to talk about is further down on the agenda and you can stay, it's better if you wait and talk to us then so we don't lose track. And if you want to talk about something that's not on the agenda or you can't stay,
Carol Benham, Lompoc resident. I didn't get the shirt memo.[617.29][617.29](LAUGHTER). Good evening, Mayor, City Council. At your March 20th meeting, the city attorney made a report from your closed session. I transcribed the comment that the city attorney made, and this is what he said. Quote, "Council has requested staff present a report to council and the public, May 1st, 2012, at the regular city council meeting regarding the real property located at 112 North H Street, Lompoc. There was no report at the May 1st meeting, and there hasn't been one since regarding the status of the Lompoc Theater. So, I wanted to remind you of that, that that report didn't happen. A couple of weeks ago, a sign appeared on the front of the Lompoc Theater that states that the Santa Barbara Bank and Trust has attached the property. I don't know what that means, so I'd like to ask the council to please follow through on that commitment and update the community on the status of the Lompoc Theater. I'd also like to ask if you could go ahead and just update the community on the status of all of LHCDC's 40 properties. I'm not asking for the council to divulge any confidential information or reveal any sensitive negotiating, just simply inform the community of the status of the properties, which ones are still in judicial foreclosure under the bank's temporary ownership, which ones have been returned to private owners. I think it would be a real service, an excellent customer service to the community, to let us know the status of all of those properties, including the theater. Thank you very much."[758.32][758.32](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Okay, we've been, we, yeah, just a sec. We don't usually do applause, but we do it for promotions, congratulations, and stuff like that, but not for speakers, so kind of hold on to it. Okay, who would like to be next?
Hi. Good evening. My name is Deanna Hall, and I would like to voice my concerns relative to the Flower Festival Queen competition. For the record, I'm not here because it's personal, I'm here because I'm concerned. Therefore, I am requesting that these documents here, the contest rules, be put into the record and reviewed by the city council, paying particular attention to items number six, seven, eight, nine, 18, and 20. Your investigation is requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communications and we'll come back to the council. Now, we're going to take on the consent calendar. These items are ministerial in nature. The first one was the approval of the minutes of the council meeting of June 5th, 2012. Then, item number two, approval of expenditures, payroll in the amount of $1,222,000. Voucher register for 525 in the amount of $398,000. A voucher register for 61 in the amount of $1,115,000. And electronic voucher payments in the amount of $1,331,000, and then credit refunds from utility billing and others in the amount of $2,125. Item number three, renewal of the low-income energy assistance program through the state of California's Department of Community Services and Development, and approval of the direct payment agreement, 12Y1415, between the city of Lompoc and the CSD for the period of July 12, 2012 through September 30th, 2014. Item number four, approval of the annual operation and maintenance plan for city facilities. And, item number five, amendment and restated market purchase programs agreement with the Northern California Power Agency. Are there any items that a council member would like to have pulled from the consent calendar at this time? Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, I'd accept a motion. Councilmember Starbuck.
I move you accept the consent calendar.
And a second.
A second.
And is there any further discussion? Seeing no lights, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0, thank you. And we'll move to item number six, a council request, an update of the urban forestry legacy program and the sale of palm trees. And our Parks and Urban Forestry Manager, Cindy McCall.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and member of the public from Lompoc. On Thursday, January 26, 2012, staff received a call from Mrs. Deborah Jewell at 412 North D Street with concerns about palm tree removals occurring in the 500 and 700 blocks of East Laurel Avenue. Staff went to the site to address the concerns with Mrs. Jewell and her partner, Mr. Hedge. As the trees were significantly through the removal stage, there was little relief that could be provided to the couple. Mrs. Jewell and Mr. Hedge have presented their concerns at every beautification and appearance commission meeting since January 26, 2012. Ms. Jewell voiced her concerns at the April 17, 2012 joint meeting between the Lompoc City Council and the Lompoc Beautification and Appearance Commission. To address Mrs. Jewell's concerns, city council directed staff to return with a staff report detailing the process. In 1995, a Small Business Administration tree planting grant was approved for the city of Lompoc Community Services Department, Urban Forestry Division. The title of the grant was Urban Forest Legacy Program with a component for planting and growing Phoenix Canaryensis, or Canary Island date palms. The palms were planted with the intent that they would be sold in the future to provide a sustained funding source for future tree planting in the future. Our first sale of palm trees occurred in fiscal year 2007 with a combined payment from Valley Crest Tree Company to the city of Lompoc for $37,700. We received no complaints about sale of trees at that time. Our remaining palms in the 500 and 700 block of East Laurel Avenue were paid for on February 14th, 2012, in the amount of $5,400. Supplemental palms in the 1500 and 1600 blocks of West Laurel Avenue were also listed for sale at this time. Due to Mrs. Jewell's and Mr. Hedge's concerns, the sale was suspended. The city of Lompoc entered into a grant agreement with California Urban Forest Council in 2010 for the purpose of planting trees. In anticipation of the future sale of the remaining palms, urban forestry staff and volunteers planted laurels nobilis, or Grecian laurel, quercus ilex, which is holly oak, that were planted to provide diversity along the street. A large component of the grant was to plant street trees along city streets with the same name as the trees. Recent history includes that a regularly scheduled meeting of the Lompoc Beautification and Appearance Commission, Mrs. Jewell submitted a tree planting request form for the planting of six to eight large Canary Island date palms. The fiscal impact for this request is as follows. The city received $5,400 for the sale of the nine palm trees. City code requires that the first $2,500 received for the sale of city property be returned to the general fund. Therefore, $2,900 remains for use on the tree project. Complying with Mrs. Jewell's request, transplanting six to eight palms is estimated to cost between $4,500 and $6,000. The staff's conclusion is, the Parks and Urban Forestry Division does not have a formal policy or program for the sale of city trees. We were remiss in not noticing the city council and the public prior to the sale of these trees. Staff proceeded with the removal and sale as performed in the past. Staff recommends that the city council support staff's direction to continue the sale of the trees as originally contemplated by the Urban Forestry Legacy Program with notice to the public. Staff's recommendations for tonight are that the city council deny the request for replanting of the palms on East Laurel Avenue between D Street and A Street, and that the city council direct staff to continue with the sale of palms in the 1500 and 1600 blocks of West Laurel Avenue with proper noticing and a report to city council prior to removal or provide staff with other direction. That concludes my report, and I'm available for questions.
Questions? Councilman Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a list of questions for you regarding this contract. First, I'd like to find out how many trees have been sold since the contract has been in place?
The current contract? Or over the period?
The contract that has been in place since 17 years ago that was entered in 1995.
We have sold, let's see, we sold 24 in 2007 and nine trees this year.
That's all you have sold out of that grant?
Yes.
Okay. And the ones that you sold in 2007 were for $37,000, and the ones that you just sold now is for $5,000?
Yes.
That's a big difference in money.
It is a big difference in money. It was a big difference in the size of the trees.
Okay. How many trees were planted for sale?
The total grant, we planted over 300 trees. The 60 additional palm trees that were planted were supplemental funds that we received from Small Business Administration, and we planted 60 trees in all, 60 palms in all.
So, the grant for growing trees and selling them planted 300 trees in the city, and you have only sold the supplemental ones that are not in the list that were originally planted?
All of the trees that were planted were not specifically planted for sale.
So, that's what I need to understand. You received a grant that was specifically for what purpose, then?
The specific purpose for the grant was to plant trees on streets that followed the tree names, to create a legacy for trees. We were notified probably July of 2000, I believe it's 2006, it was in 1994. We were notified of the grant that we applied for, for $50,000 to Small Business Administration. That's a very rapidly progressing grant that has a very short timeline, and the purpose is to stimulate the local economy. We hired local contractors to plant the trees, we brought local trees from, I know, two local nurseries. And so, halfway through our grant, it was in June, July of 2000, no, 1996, we received a call from Alan Robertson with California Department of Forestry that they had additional funding from other cities that were not going to be able to meet the deadline, and they wanted to know if we would be able to use the money quickly, get the trees planted, and that's when we purchased the 60 palms.
So, the 60 palms were for the purpose to be sold, but the other trees were not?
That's correct.
Who made the decision? Where did that come about that we were planting trees to be sold, if the original grant was for a different purpose?
It was a negotiation that was made between staff and the staff for a CDF.
A negotiation made between the city staff and CDF that we would grow trees, we would take care of them, and then we would sell them. Did that ever go to city council? Did the council ever vote it?
No, it did not.
I see. I'm surprised that there is such an administrative policy to go in the business of growing trees and selling them later on. It is surprising that this happened without any knowledge from the public or perhaps the city council at the time.
This is not the first time we've sold palm trees, so the public has known in the past that we've done it.
I guess it's news to me. It was news to me when it first came here out of a complaint. So, I'm somewhat surprised that we enter into a contract where we actually make money and the council is not informed of that. I find it a little surprising. Also, I would like to know, what are these funds used for? I mean, where did the $37,000 go and where did the $5,000 go?
The $37,000 went to move other trees for the Lompoc Community Center and to River Bend Park.
I see. So, there's been some administrative decision that was made that the income that we received from selling trees went to be used within the urban forestry. So, my question is, was this within the budget? When we discuss budget, was this part of the budget for the urban forestry department? And was it accounted as such, the $37,000? Because when we go into budget sessions and we discuss, particularly the urban forestry being a department that is largely, if not 100% funded by the general fund, I think that it would serve the administration to let us know that there is an additional $37,000 that could be allocated for who knows what the council may decide to do. It is a general fund. If it was used for the purpose that you told me, for urban forestry, it was definitely a general fund money. And as such, I would like to hear from our finance director to let me know where was it in the budget.
In the 2007 to 2008 budget cycle, the grant money that came into the city was put into the Beautification Special Revenue Fund, and the subsequent payment of the money for that moving of the trees came out of that same fund. So, the money did not flow through the general fund for that particular grant.
And why is that? If it is, if it is going to a department that is funded by the general fund? You know, I'd just like to understand how these decisions are being made and why is it that we get income in the city and we're not aware of it?
The urban forestry division is not in the general fund.
As the last time I heard, you're pretty much funded by the general fund.
Parks is, but urban forestry isn't predominantly funded through road funds.
Okay, I understand correctly, okay. So, perhaps we need to review that, if that's the case. But I am surprised that the decisions are being made in this way without really bringing it forth to the council. But having said that, I have a couple of other questions. Why, as I understand from the minutes in the Beautification Commission, you mentioned that the trees were being removed, well, you mentioned a couple of things. One, you said that the trees were being planted by the scouts, the Boy Scouts. And according to the contract, that was not allowed. Volunteers were not allowed, so I'd like to know what happened.
We were required to have the trees that were purchased through the grant to be planted by small business owners in Lompoc, and we used Miller Landscapes, Creative Landscapes, to do all of the tree planting. We had simultaneously during the same planting year, we did a tree planting on Earth Day with Boy Scouts. Completely different trees, not the palm trees.
Okay, okay, so I guess at one point in time, I was here when we had the joint meeting, and you did say, and the mayor also said, that the Boy Scouts had planted them, so I guess there was just some misunderstanding.
I made a mistake.
You missed. You missed it, okay, thank you. So, also at that joint meeting, it was said that there was, that the trees were being removed because there was a complaint by a business owner. I'd like to see that complaint. Do you have it? And can we share it with the council?
I can provide it for the city clerk, and she can make copies for everyone.
Okay, so you do have a written complaint from a business owner?
I have a memo that was sent, not a formal complaint, that was filed through the city clerk's office. We deal with complaints on a daily basis regarding trees and parks, and that it was not a formal request for information through the city clerk's office.
Okay, and as you're aware, there is a city policy that all complaints have to be written complaints. So, I would like, I would like to make sure that there is a consistency, because I've had residents tell me that they call in, they want to complain about something, and they're told you have to come in into City Hall and file in a written complaint. So, we do have a policy that complaints have to be written, they can be anonymous, but there is a city policy. If that policy is not, you know, exercised everywhere, we have an inconsistency. So, should we remove the policy?
That's certainly up to you, but we do receive complaints daily via phone and email, so.
You acknowledge those. So, perhaps maybe the policy needs to be revised such as that an email and a phone call is okay, right? Since you are taking care of those as well.
City Administrator, could you speak to that, please? I think it's the difference between maybe code enforcement and then tree issues.
No. The policy for a written complaint form is primarily with the planning, housing, and code enforcement complaints.
I have a note here that says, "City policy reads, 'Request for removal of live trees must be made in writing to the Lompoc Beautification and Appearance Commission.'" Request for removals of live trees?
Request for removal.
Yes.
Not a complaint about a tree?
Well, but I understand that the complaint was, "We don't want those trees there, we want them removed." And they were removed, and they were live, so the city policy should be enforceable, unless we want to get rid of the city policy. The city policy says, "Request for removal of live trees must be made in writing to the Lompoc Beautification and Appearance Commission." Was there a complaint made to remove these trees to the Lompoc Beautification and Appearance Commission?
No.
Okay, thank you. So, we're not following our policies, and we'll remove the trees. Correct?
I think you're comparing things that are not similar.
Well, I guess at one point in time, I'm just looking for consistency, because we do have, as you heard, residents that are quite upset about what happened. I think it is our role as a city to do whatever policies to have in a consistent way, so we can kind of eliminate these issues of certain problems are dealt one way and other problems are dealt in a different way. It does not go with customer satisfaction, right? It does not go with having a consistent policy where all residents are treated the same way. And there are many points which I can continue to talk about. The city policy also states that the city will not allow the removal of a city tree when the tree is not hazardous, when no construction project is scheduled, which would alter the health of the tree. So, again, I am confused about this specific program that we had in place for 60 palm trees.
I think that the word removal is the difference. When we remove a tree, we typically classify tree removal as going in, cutting it down, grinding the stump. We didn't remove these trees. They were still alive, we moved them, they were purchased and sold so that we could purchase trees for another project. It was the sole purpose of the palms. And if it was a mistake on my part, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Cindy, when those were planted, that was railroad property, wasn't it?
Yes.
And the trees that were planted on West Laurel are planted on railroad property?
We have some that are outside of our jurisdiction, and the large majority of the palms that were left to be moved that were on the area between D and A Street were not in the city right-of-way.
Okay. And when you, when we did that, if I remember correctly, that was in agreement with the railroad to go ahead and plant them there, and they were all good with it?
Yes.
And subsequently, the property between A and E Street was sold by the railroad to a new owner?
I think it's multiple owners, but yes, that's correct.
That's actually all one, but anyway, and that owner is the one who requested that we remove our palm trees from his property?
He raised concerns about it.
Yes, okay. So, the difference was that the ownership of the property changed along the road?
Ownership changed. We made some mistakes when we planted the tree, when the contractor planted the trees, and it's some very, we didn't take specific, so we planted some outside of the right-of-way, so that created a problem for us as well.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, I'm not going to go back through what Councilmember Martin brought up, because I mean, a lot, I understand that. I want to go right to the root of this, though, that what council's request was, was for the tree removal income program. I got this report the other day, and I read it, and I almost felt like we were calling Ms. Jewell and Mr. Hedge out on this. It's not just them. And so, this report to me with the recommendations, I'm going to move right through it. I'm very curious, because I asked about this money initially after the sale had already been done, and this money went to the beautification fund. We all concur with that. What I want to know is, who controls the beautification fund? Is it the chairperson? Is the beautification commission even involved in this fund? Because the staff report includes general fund revenue out of a, out of a fund here, Department 720. Who writes the checks out of the beautification commission fund?
Finance.
So, this is part of the general fund then, not a commission fund?
Well, the beautification commission chair does not write checks.
I understand that. That's why I'm wondering why all of a sudden they receive the money. Are we washing money through the commission? Is my question here, I guess, is what it is.
Brad, could you comment on how that money's handled, please?
The beautification fund itself is a, what we call a special revenue fund within the confines of the entire city. It's another one of the city's funds outside of the general fund, just like the electric fund is not part of the general fund, but they are part of the overall city. And we utilize those funds to be able to keep segregated funds that need to be especially accounted for, accounted for separately.
I guess my question here is, I bought a tree calendar. If you donate through your utility bills to the commission, what is the commission's responsibility with this money now? Where does the money that the calendar generates, the money that people up their utility bill generates, are they the ones paying for these trees to be moved into the rear bed? Is there two funds in the commission's fund now? Why do they sell calendars, then?
The commission has numerous ways to raise money, and.
But for what? They don't have a fund.
They do, they have the beautification fund, but it's not a fund, it's certainly not a fund that staff accesses.
So, there is somebody on the commission that controls the beautification commission's fund?
I'm going to have to leave that to Brad. He's the finance manager, director.
I'll leave this right now, but there are questions I have about that. I'm going to go right into the conclusion part of this here, where Parks and Urban Forestry Division does not have a formal policy or program for the sale of trees, but the recommendation is for council to go ahead and approve the selling of trees. I'm not going to go along with this. This legacy thing, I haven't found Chinese elm laying yet, and the tree report, after all the beautification commission meetings I've been to, and I've looked at the tree removal report and the tree planting report, this has been invisible to me the whole time. Now, whether it's not the right hand or the, how this goes, we've never reported on these types of sales that I'm aware of. You know, I'm firmly believing that we advertise ourselves as Tree City and not a tree nursery, and I don't like this solicitation letters from these people walking around offering to buy our trees, and then the commission not being in communication, the money going over here. I'm not going to support the recommendation on this.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. I think we need to take a step back briefly and consider not only what it is we're being asked, but what jurisdiction staff had. Staff had the jurisdiction to do what they did. If there was no policy in place, that's not their fault, that's our fault. So, what we need to consider is actually establishing a policy that will ensure that this doesn't happen again. So, that's where I'm at. I think that that is something that needs to take place at a future meeting. We're going to have to discuss this tonight, I think, as a separate issue. I think we're talking specifically about a certain location and certain palm trees, whether we're going to pay to replant them or not. That's, I think, where the discussion needs to lie this evening. The question I do have in regards to the 60 palm trees, you said 24 so far have been sold?
We, we've sold, we've sold 20, we planted 60, and we have 22 left.
And how many sales was that in total? Was that, we have, so that's two sales. So, if you can imagine, for staff, the first sale was in 2007, this one was more recently. If I was a staff member, I probably wouldn't think that this would necessitate a policy anyway, because it was a one-time grant, it was something that we had approved quite a while ago, something they had jurisdiction to do. So, I'm not going to yell at you and tell you that you're doing a bad thing. I think that maybe this is something we need to look into. There's clearly some confusion in regards to funds. I agree, if the general fund is involved, we need more oversight of that. We should have known about these things. You do take some responsibility for possibly not notifying the public in the way that you should have. I want to focus on here on out. That was my statements, thank you.
That's it for the moment. Let's go to public comment.
Thank you.
Who would like to talk to us about this subject? Come on down. Be sure you tell us your name.
My name is Deborah Jewell, and I'm a Lompoc resident and homeowner. Good evening, mayor and city council members and the public. I last attended the joint city council beautification commission meeting on 41712 and presented documents to each council member to review. In summary, I noted, "I reviewed the monthly tree reports by staff and compared it to the yearly reports and found discrepancies. The monthly tree removal reports for 2011 show a total of 133 trees removed due to a specific reason, dead, hazardous, diseased, et cetera. The annual summary report for 2011 shows a total of 378 trees removed, 127 by city crew and 251 by private contractor. The numbers don't just add up. There are 245 trees unaccounted for that were removed by private contractors in 2011. I said it had come to my attention that the urban forestry division is selling mature, healthy trees to at least one out-of-town private contractor, Valley Crest Tree Company. I've been told that this is a relocation and income tree acquisition program. I reviewed the city's tree removal policy that states, 'Request to remove live trees must be submitted in writing to the Beautification and Appearance Commission and can only be removed under certain circumstances. I respectfully requested that the city council look into this and clarify what the income replacement tree program is, and provide a public report listing the healthy, live, mature trees that are being sold and relocated out of our city of Lompoc.'" Councilmember Cecilia Martner made a formal request for the staff to report to council on the income tree program and contracts with private contractors to remove and sell healthy trees. Her motion was seconded by councilmembers Bob Lingle and Dirk Starbuck and approved by the council. I reviewed the staff report and have some comments. The staff report does not address the income tree replacement program, nor do they provide a public report listing the healthy, live, mature trees that are being sold, except for the Canary Island palm trees. Recommendations: What is staff recommending be replanted on East Laurel if not Canary Island palm trees? We have been repeatedly promised substantial trees would be planted to obscure the blighted view that the city created for our neighborhood. A note at Commission Becky, a note, Commission Chair Becky Barrett suggested some palms be transplanted to East Laurel from West Laurel Avenue in the February 14, 2012 minutes of the Beautification and Appearance Commission. Two, why would the city council need to direct staff to sell trees that, if that is what staff does on a regular basis on its own authority? Three, I would ask that the city's policy on planting trees to relocate outside the city at a later date for income be explained and clarified, and that the public itself be allowed to some, have some input into this process when its own neighborhood is affected, as mine was on January 26, 2012, when the beautiful palm trees were removed with no notice, no valid explanation, and nothing substantial planned to replace them. I have also noted a few more discrepancies with the staff report. Background: When I contacted the urban forestry division on January 26, 2012, the trees were not significantly through the removal stage. In fact, they weren't completely removed until the following day, January 27, 2012. Ms. McCall stated in an email the same day that "we are continuing with the trees on East Laurel from A to D as they are currently located on private property and the owners want them gone." Discussion: Nowhere in the 1995 Urban Forestry Legacy Program grant does it state, "The trees to be planted are to be sold for income at a future date." It also lists the Canary Island date palms to be planted on Date Street, not on Laurel Avenue. The reason the West Laurel palms were suspended was due to Facebook speculation we are currently experiencing, according to an email from Cindy McCall on January 26, 2012. Conclusion: If the Parks and Urban Forestry Division doesn't have a formal policy or program for the sale of city trees, then why are they being sold? Why are there 245 live trees unaccounted for in 2011? How does formal policy and past practice differ? Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you.
And I'm providing a copy to each of the council members and the mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this subject? Come on down.
My name's Randall Senna, and I became aware of the issue from a Facebook post that Deborah made. And it just seems like to me, just from a general sense, that there's an oversight problem, and with the city facing budget issues the way it currently is, it's not unlike someone who's on a limited income. And if you're not careful with where that money's going, quickly find out, there is no money. So, when $37,000 goes into some fund and no one's checking, or where does that money go? It seems like a pretty big issue that we should look into. Sounds like something you're going to do, but if we keep closing the barn door after the horse is out, there's going to be no horses in there. So, something we should definitely look into, and I support Deborah in her quest to find out what is the city's position on this issue. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Cordoba, and I'm chair currently of Lompoc Valley and Bloom. I'm speechless about the way that this whole process and the situation has transpired. I've had trees that I've cared about die or removed, and they've been on public property or they've been in somebody else's home, and they've been removed, and it's caused me, you know, inordinate pain. It's caused a lack of shade, it's caused lack of beauty, all of which I can't control. So, I really understand your pain with seeing these particular palms removed. I believe it is under discretion, discretion of Cindy McCall and the Department of Urban Forestry to do what they felt was necessary under the current policies and under her leadership. She is a person who absolutely loves trees and loves Lompoc and would do nothing, nothing, to harm either trees or beautification in this city. She spends hours and hours and hours trying to find money to supplement the general fund with grants, and I think she's been put in a very, very tough spot, that I think she deserves the. support of the city council, the mayor, the city administrator, everybody in this room. She deserves your support because this is a very, very tough situation. It was a difficult decision for her to make in the first place, to try to get some money in and to try to keep in line with the provisions of the grant. And it's very difficult for her now to come under fire from people who she has worked tirelessly for, you know, umpteen years in this community. So I would like to see some support for Cindy McCall and the tough position that she's in and knowing that she's come under fire and this is causing a lot of grief in this community. And there has to be a solution for it that is amicable for the two people who are in pain. And the city council would like to see things change a little bit, but it isn't... This shouldn't be a witch hunt. This really shouldn't be. This is something that might have been a little bit mishandled, might have been a little bit oversight or miscommunication or something like that, but we don't need to go to the mat on this. There are bigger fish to fry. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello, my name's Maria Tenega. I agree with Ashley Costa. You know, there's obviously an issue here that needs to be addressed and I don't think you should punish... You should look... And I agree with the gentleman up here, obviously there's an oversight problem here. And you should not be condemning Cindy McCall for a decision she made. And if she didn't end up making a mistake, I think you as the city council need to give her direction and need to come up with a policy. And, I mean, Lompoc's full of trees. I personally call in sometimes... We had a tree removed that cars kept backing into and there are need... Sometimes there is a need to remove trees that are there or have been there forever for different causes. In this situation, she made a decision and being the head of the urban forestry department, I think that, you know, she needs more guidance if you disagree with the decision that she made in this particular situation. But like Lori said, you should not go on a witch hunt just based on this particular situation. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Yenidia De Vries and I'm not an expert on trees. I usually stick to growing vegetables that I can eat. But it strikes me that there is an underlying issue here of transparency and transparency of access to the workings of government. And so I understand... I agree that the council should formulate a policy with regard to the selling of trees, but I would urge the city council to go beyond that and to try to include in that policy something that also addresses the issue of transparency. That, you know, sitting out of the public, it seems that... It's clear that somebody knows the answer and there might even be an explanation, but that is not coming forth to the public and that feels that that's the underlying problem that is causing a lot of the confusion, a lot of the tension. And that that could probably be applied not just to this policy, but more broadly to many areas of city government. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Yeah, go on down, Larry. Yeah. Anyone else? Let me just check. Anyone else who wants to speak from the public? Going once, going twice, gone. Okay.
Well, after listening to a few of the comments, I need to clarify and straighten out. This idea that there's no oversight of this money that goes into the beautification commission is just not so. The money... There were 24 trees sold in 2007. $37,700 went into a fund numbered 40065. It's the Beautification Commission Fund. John Walk before, Brad now, puts those kinds of monies in that fund because it's assured that it goes to trees. If they put it into a general fund account, it gets mixed in with the rest of the general fund money and you could use it to pay for firefighter gear or anything else or for parks. $37,000 went in that fund in April of 2007. Shortly thereafter, a contract and a PO was written with this company to remove all the trees at the senior community center that the hospital was taking over. That grant... That PO was signed by the purchasing agent and the city administrator. There was complete oversight of that. $42,900 went to pay this contractor, remove all those trees and replant them at River Bend Park. Complete oversight. Other things that of any significance that came out of that account were things such as $2,000 to buy trees that go to Recognition Grove. So I submit there has been complete oversight by the city administrator, Cindy, and the finance staff of those funds. They know where it goes and they know how it's spent. So I want to stop all the rumors that there's some secret fund and the money's getting washed. That's just not so. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Any questions on that? Councilmember Martner.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Bean, for the clarification. If there are any rumors regarding monies going somewhere, I, you know, I'm not aware of it. Listening to what has been going on and reading, you know, reading the complaints made by the citizens at the beautification committee, I think really what's going on here is that there is not a clear message that was ever sent out. There was conflicting information all the time. At one point in time, it wasn't clear what program we had. We certainly were not aware that we were in the business of growing trees and selling them. So that was a surprising new thing that came up. The second one was how it was handled. Was it in private property? Not really, maybe was, and then the property got sold. So there was a series of miscommunications or lack of, I wouldn't say, basically not being clear on really what was going on. And I think Cindy is aware of that. Then there was also what do we do after? There were many proposals. Now there is yet another proposal here tonight, which is we do nothing. I think that's one of the proposals here. So if you look at it from the point of view of the people that have been involved in this issue, it doesn't seem that the city has a clear view of how to handle it, nor does it seem that the city knows all the details. And perhaps that's where we're falling off the boat here and we're getting all upset. And by the way, it is not a witch hunt by any means, okay? It is a clarification of what is the city doing with trees that planted and where were they planted and who is paying for them and how many more are there going to be wherever they're going to be. And I still not clear... I'm still not clear on this program that we have. We have a program, we planted 60 of them, we sold 22. Okay, so what's next? Are we going to sell the rest? Are we going to continue the program or no? So maybe that's where we need to focus right now is could we be very clear in what we're going to do next so residents are not surprised again on all the trees are being taken out and we build these conspiracies that, you know, what happened and where did they come from and where did they go and where did the money go for that matter, right? So I think we need to be a little bit more clear in explaining what's going on and what was the purpose of the trees and what's the future thing? What's going to happen next? What other trees are going to be taken down and for how much money and when? So the residents around that area know about it and they don't get upset when it happens.
Cindy, of the remaining trees, if you could come up, please. How many are in the... In public right-of-way and how many are on U.P. property? Do you have any idea?
The remaining trees that are...
On West Laurel.
West Laurel.
Yeah.
I'd rather take the measurements before I tell you.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm a little embarrassed, this whole situation. Number one, you're right, we probably should have a policy on this, which hopefully at the end of the day, we will have a policy on this. But I'm also embarrassed on how we treated Ms. McCall. The city is... We ask people, our managers and our directors, to take the initiative to make decisions. Everything doesn't have to come to the city council. Everything doesn't have to go to the city administrator. Ms. McCall, admittedly, she made some mistakes, okay? We should have a policy. At the end of the day, I hope we do. This grant was, if I have it right, was to beautify the community, stimulate the economy. And that's exactly what Ms. McCall did. She took this money, she bought some trees, she planted many of them around the city, which are there today, which will remain there today. They're not trees to be dug up and be sold. There was, from what I understand, there was some excess funds. We purposely planted some trees to grow, then to sell, to bring more money into the community so we could buy more trees and further beautify the community. Yes, the city council was not aware of this, okay? I don't know if we really had to be aware of it. We are coming up on the flower fest... Let me put it, the fireworks, because this is a city event, the fireworks. I don't know if we have a city policy on selling popcorn, soda, licorice at the fireworks. Now, we may. City Minister, maybe if we do, you should let us know what the policy is. But I don't think we have a policy on this. And I believe that probably the money that we're going to be taking in will be put into a fund and probably used for parks and recreation or possibly used for the fireworks next year. And other than possibly, the mayor may not know exactly where all this money is going to go. He seems to know it all, so he may know. I'm sorry, Ms. McCall. I mean, I know you... Your tensions were 100% genuine. You did it for the benefit of the city. I'm sure that if we ask the finance director to account for every single penny that went into this, I'm guaranteed the community, and I'm 100% positive, that he would be able to produce reports that'll tell us where this money is. So I'll go back to what I said earlier. Yes, today, I'd like to see us come out of here saying, we need a policy on this. We have a grant, we planted some trees, many trees are going to stay. What are we going to do with the rest of the money? So, but I commend you on trying to do the right thing for the city and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick numbers. There were 1,037 planted, according to the document, and of those, these were the only 60 that were planted with the intention of selling, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And how many were moved from the community center? Just in a rough number, there were a bunch.
I want to say 18 or 19, but they're big trees.
Okay. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. There is a question that was posed by the public that I am curious about, and that's in regards to the monthly tree removal report versus the annual summary report. And my assumption is that the annual summary report includes some data that is not included in the monthly tree report, which would create that discrepancy. Can you speak to that?
Yes, I can. We don't always get information that's done through our contractor in time for the monthly report. And that's why we see a discrepancy in the year-end because we do get a year-end report that makes it much easier to transfer into reading for the commission.
Although I definitely understand that as being a valid issue, I think that 245 trees unaccounted for is a bit extreme in that sense.
I do, and I'll research it. I can't imagine that... We put everything in the computer. It's certainly something we can pull up on the GIS and correct.
So what I would like to talk to council... I have one more question for you, but what I would like council to consider this evening is actually sending this to the commission, to start at the commission level. My hope would be that Ms. Jewell would be there as well to discuss what she thinks the part of the policy should include. Some things to include, you know, that is a concern, this monthly report versus the annual report, what our policy is on selling trees. You know, maybe there's a certain period of time, we want to say if it's been there for long enough, we don't want to sell it because clearly it's become a staple in that community. Whatever the policy entails, I would think that that would start at that level versus here. But the final question that I have, and I think that the real crux of this issue, is that there is some visual blight where these folks are living at the time, excuse me, at this time. So what is the solution to that problem in staff's opinion?
Well, my solution is to replant the trees. We have trees that can be relocated, the same palms from other areas in town. June and July is not the best time to do it. You know, I... We failed enough in the process. I don't want to move trees to replace the trees that were there and have them fail. So the optimum time to do it would be in the fall, and I hate that for Mrs. Jewell.
The one thing that I'm wondering though is I don't want to solve one problem and create another.
I understand.
So are there any trees where you feel that we could relocate? Now, maybe not the entire row that used to be there, maybe there, you know, maybe there needs to be... It's not going to be like it was in the first place, but... And she's going to have to wait, it sounds like, till fall, which is understandable. Is there any trees that wouldn't create another issue?
Yes, yes. We've identified nine trees that can be moved. We've had a couple of contractors come in to tell us what it would cost and...
What's the approximate cost of them?
Between $4,500 and $6,000. We could also purchase smaller trees and plant them, but I think that Mrs. Jewell prefers something a little more substantial.
I... Although I would agree with that in regards to the fiscal concern of the city, sometimes we may have to just go with a solution that works for all of us and that may be a better solution, something that's less costly. Now, Mr. Wilkie, how... Do you know the outstanding balance? What is the balance currently in the Beautification and Special Project Fund?
As of March, there was about $21,000 in the beautification fund.
And is that earmarked for anything at this point?
Excuse me? Say that again?
Is any of those monies earmarked for anything specifically, specific at this point?
The whole entire fund is earmarked for beautification-type activities. So within that type of activity, there are some budgeted items. I do know that there's some budgeted items for Recognition Grove and there's also budgeted items for the administration of the beautification committee itself. But primarily, I believe... That probably a majority of that is unbudgeted at this point in time.
So my question is then, you know, understanding that some of the monies from the sale went to the general fund, how... I know it has it in here somewhere. What was the amount of money that was given to the beautification fund from the sale?
$2,900.
That's correct.
Yeah, there is $2,500 that went to the general fund and then there is $2,900 that are for the project and replacing the trees would be somewhere between $4,500 to $6,000.
Right. So my curiosity would be then, if I'm comfortable with saying, you know, we sold them, but if we can at least just break even and use $2,900, up to $2,900, to put something there, you know, to the greatest satisfaction of council as well as the resident, do you think that that's a possibility?
Most definitely.
Thank you.
What would it cost to buy some other trees without digging up the ones we've got?
Well, as long as they're in the right-of-way, we can use our tree replacement fund money and we do have money for that, so we may be able to get 36-inch box trees that are pretty close to that size and they'd probably be in that same range. It depends on how many trees that she wants and the time of year, but we found some that could be moved, could do a combination of it this fall. Box trees and relocation.
What's a 24-inch go for?
24-inch Canary Island pine probably goes for about $275.
And a 36? Yes.
Roughly about $450 to $525.
All right, so smaller's cheaper, is the way it is. Councilmember Lingle. Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Martner.
I guess reading this, according to the city code, $2,500 had to be... $2,500 had to go to the general fund. So back in 2007, with the $37,000 of the sale, did some money go to the general fund? I guess the city code would have kicked in as well, right?
I don't have an answer for that. When I looked at the transaction that was in the Beautification Fund, I didn't look to see if there was an additional amount posted to the general fund.
Because actually, if we didn't have to do that, we would have just about all the money to replace the trees, right? The $5,400, if we didn't have to put that money back into the general fund.
I do have funding in my tree replacement account that I'd be more than willing to use that funding as well. As long as the trees are in the right of way, it's perfectly acceptable.
Okay.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like Councilmember Costa's recommendation that we sort of meet midway. We use the $2,900 to purchase some new trees. We have some city trees that are, you say, are in the right of way. And I believe we can very... Not very easily, but very possibly, come up with a nice combination of... A combination of purchased trees and city trees and stay within our $2,900. We'll make Mrs. Chouelle her... Do you live in this... In that neighborhood? Is that where... You have vision, okay. So we'll make her neighborhood maybe not completely whole, but close to whole, and within a couple of years, it will be whole. We'll keep our general fund whole, and we will be much better off for learning a good lesson, so... I agree with Councilmember Costa. Maybe just the best combination we can come up with for that $2,900.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I'd like to throw in on this, too, that I think that the Beautification Commission should have a report... Running report on this legacy program. Is this the only program that's out there in urban forestry?
No.
Are they informed of the other programs?
Well, this is a...
They should be.
They should be, yes.
Okay. I mean, I think that this is one that nobody was... It's been forgotten.
We don't have any other thing where we're growing trees for sale, though, other than this, correct? Okay. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
Let me find the staff recommendation. I move, first of all, that the commission discuss potential policy in regard to sale of trees, the program that Mr. Starbuck just recently referenced. Also, the discrepancy with the reports. Any other concerns in regards to tree sales and tree removal to be brought to council at a future date? And I also move that council give discretion to the Urban Forestry Department to spend up to $2,900 from the Beautification Fund to replace trees along the 1,500 and 1,600 blocks of West Laurel Avenue...
No, east.
East.
D.
My apologies. Replanting on East Laurel Avenue from D to A Streets.
And a second motion. Okay. Are there any questions about the motion? Okay. And seeing no lights, could we vote, please? And that passes 5-0. Okay. I want to get a sense of who's here for what, so that I can reorder the agenda, maybe. How many of you here are here to visit with us about the electrical rate decision? Okay, that was easy. Brad, yeah, that's one. At least somebody... How many of you are here to chat with us about the literacy issue? Okay? How many of you are concerned about items nine, 10, or 11? Or 12? Anybody yet? Larry, you don't count. Will? Okay. So it looks to me like the eights have it. And with council consent, I'm going to reorder the agenda to take item eight next, which is going to break Brad's heart, because he's just ready to go. Everybody okay with that? Okay. So we're going to take item eight next. And we have our library director, Molly Gerald.
Good evening, Mayor Lynn, council, and members of the public. I want to first thank you for moving this item up. I understand that a couple of people who plan to speak have already had to go home with children, or... We're appreciative of being moved up. I'm here this evening to ask your consideration of funding for the literacy program on behalf of the Library Board of Trustees. First, Christina Chil, the literacy coordinator, will provide a program overview. Then I will follow with a brief statement about the program, and a few program participants will complete our presentation. So we'll get started, and thank you.
Good evening, mayor and city council. Thank you for this opportunity. Literacy skills are essential for work, learning, and success in life. Yet according to the 2003 National Adult Literacy Survey, 93 million Americans lack basic reading and writing skills. In 2009, the national data was used to estimate that in Santa Barbara County, there are 76,000 adults who lack basic reading and writing skills and could benefit from literacy services. According to the U.S. Department of Education, it costs $6,000 to $10,000 in state funds to educate a student in public school. For 27 years, library literacy programs in California have been providing a unique and highly successful service to educate adults at a mere fraction of the cost. Our adult reading program... Our adult reading program was established at the library in 1989 to provide services to address illiteracy and to promote library services to adults who traditionally do not use the library, and also to help the library fulfill its mission by promoting lifelong learning for all residents.
Your one slide off.
In 23 years, the program has served 1,800 adults. As a result of the newfound skills, many Lompoc residents have been empowered to find better jobs, vote, open local businesses, and further their education. Others are paying it forward by volunteering at the library or with other community agencies. Literacy services are unique, unduplicated, and cost-effective. The fact that they are provided in a safe, comfortable, and supportive setting attracts adult learners who oftentimes are not of skill or comfort level to attend adult school. Most feel they have already failed in school and face barriers of fear or embarrassment. Many turn to us when their lives are in crisis, when they need to seek legal help, when they have lost their job, or when their kids are struggling in school. They know they can get free confidential help from someone who cares and has the time and patience to assist them in reading and writing, the things that are important to their lives, not just learning about Jack and Jill running up the hill. The key to the success of our program is that the instruction is provided one-on-one. Tutors are trained to structure their lessons based on their students' needs and goals, such as filling out applications, balancing a checkbook, learning how to send an email. It allows them to learn at their own pace and helps them to build the skills and confidence to be more productive as workers, parents, and community members. Families for Literacy was established in 1993 for adults with young children to help them read to their kids, use the services of the library, and prepare preschoolers for entering school. The program serves 35 families each year, and this program is instrumental in helping to break the cycle of family illiteracy. A second family literacy program was established in 2002 through a partnership with the county health clinic. This program provides free books and encouragement to read from doctors at Wellchild visits. It reaches 1,000 low-income families each year. Each year, outcomes are carefully measured by each student and tutor pair, and in turn, are reported to the state library and local funders. As you can see, last year, the program was very successful. We served 96 students, and of those, 81 advanced at least one grade level or achieved at least one personal literacy goal. Because we use volunteers, the costs for running the program are kept low. Last year, 3,584 volunteer instructional hours were provided by volunteers. This computes to about $71,000 value to the community. The literacy program began with seed money from the California State Library. These four-year startup grants were provided under the premise that libraries or local government would fund or seek support to carry the programs into the future. In year five and beyond, programs receive supporting funds based on a formula that rewards programs that get local support. Even though literacy has been an integral part of our library for 23 years, funding has never been in place to bring the program into the library's regular budget. The library does, however, provide $10,000 in in-kind support. According to the state library literacy staff, our situation in Lompoc is very unique. We are one of the only programs in the state that does not... That is not funded in part by our local government. When public library funds were plentiful, the library board had earmarked funds for literacy. But as PLF monies declined, the allocation to literacy was also reduced and came to an end in 2004. This put our program in jeopardy for the first time. The city came to our rescue in 2005 and has been very instrumental in keeping the literacy program operating in times of need. The council has allocated $124,000 to the program from 2005 to 2009. No funds were requested in the last two budget cycles due to the city's declining budget. The primary expense of the program is the literacy coordinator's salary. The literacy coordinator is responsible for the administration and promotion of the program. From this slide, you can see a condensed listing of my duties. I have a full slate, and believe it or not, this operation was once administered by two full-time staff. Because of the economy, our budget has declined from $77,000 in '08-'09 to a bare-bones budget of $59,369 this year. To lower the budget in 2010, I assumed the duties of volunteer coordinator at two hours a week, and my position was reduced from full-time to part-time. With much of my time spent fundraising and grant-writing, this has kept the program afloat, but it also drains valuable time away from program development. Literacy has always depended on state funds. In 10-11, the state grant accounted for 54% of our entire budget. Now that the state has completely eliminated funding for libraries, it has put our program in jeopardy once again. Fortunately, the California State Library was able to provide an emergency grant to assist at-risk programs. This gave us time to secure grants from city and county CDBG human services programs, Verizon, and Wells Fargo. These new sources of revenue and our continued fundraising will carry us through this fiscal year. However, looking forward to next year, there is no way we can continue to operate without governmental support. We have secured $10,181 in city and county CDBG funds. We received good news from the state recently that we will also be receiving an emergency grant this year, or 11 for the following year, for $9,473. The Friends of the Library will likely contribute $4,000, as they have done in the past, and proceeds from this year's Flower Festival should bring in about $5,000. This will be carried over, but it will still leave us with about a $21,186 shortfall. It is unfortunate that the state decided to eliminate funding to libraries at a time when library services are needed more than now, more than ever. And I believe that after 23 years, it would be a disservice to our community to see the program end. I would like to leave you with the faces of some of our success stories. With the help of their tutors, the student on the left earned her high school diploma and now runs a very successful daycare business. The lady in the middle graduated from the Learner Leader Institute, and I think she's going to be speaking here tonight. And the one on the right got her citizenship and is now registered CNA. There are many more, and with each success, it is a tribute to our volunteers that make this program possible. I thank the city council for your past support and ask that you will provide support to carry us into the future.
I just want to mention a few things about funding. In the staff report, two figures were listed as the possible gap that needs to be filled. On Friday, the county of Santa Barbara completed its budget hearings and did assure us that the $61... The $6,181 is part of the budget going into 12-13. So as Christina said, the shortfall right now is a little over $21,000. The other funding that is uncertain at this point is the state budget, which we are all familiar with, the uncertainty of what's going on there. But it is possible, and there are many advocates in the legislature, for a return of partial... A restoration of partial funding for literacy. If this happens, the Lompoc literacy program could receive about $7,000 in 12-13. And I'm not sure when the final decisions will be made on the budget, but I did want to give you that update. That would drop the funding gap to about $13,000. And just a couple of things I wanted to mention. I'm sure you're aware, from the Economic Development Committee's report, that education is one of the key pieces of the committee's strategic plan for Lompoc. And increasing adult literacy is a vital part of improving educational levels in our community. And some people might say that this can be accommodated within the adult school program. And Christina touched on this, but I'd just like to mention again that these students face barriers. Some of them work extremely long hours, and the adult school classes do not align at all with their ability to attend. Some of them have small children whom they cannot have accompany them to classes, whereas at the library, we do allow children, of course, to be there in the children's room or in baby holders with their parents while they're being tutored. The tutors do everything possible to allow the flexibility, six days a week, at any time the student can make it, to spend the time with them. And some of the tutors have two to three students. Also, I'd like to mention that some people might feel that this could be run as a volunteer program. But we have one highly skilled, part-time person who runs this program at 28 hours a week, providing a sustainable framework for the currently... We have 64 volunteers to help adults and their children move from the margins of our community, where they're a drain on community resources, and moving them to a position that they are active participants in the commerce and the community life that we enjoy. The structure of this program and the rigorous reporting and accountability required by the state library allow the program to be successful. All the volunteers are required to have a background check that's paid for by the program. And after 10 hours of training, they're carefully matched with a student. And now, a few of the participants would like to address you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Carlson, and I have been a tutor with the Adult Literacy Program here in Lompoc for the past six years. I was honored when Molly and Christina asked me to make a presentation to you and... To make it from the tutor's perspective. And I'm not going to say that I speak for all the tutors, because we're a wide-ranging, diverse group of people. But among the 50 or so of us that there are actively tutoring right now at the library, we do have several things in common. The first thing is that all of us are doing this on a completely volunteer basis. There's no one that's receiving any penny of any money, financial remuneration for anything that we're doing. We do receive intangible rewards. The biggest one is seeing our students progress and make successes, make... Meet their goals. It's a program that is... It's a program that is goal-oriented. Every six months, we sit down with our students and we have a checklist. We encourage them to come up with goals that they want to reach in four different areas: the area of their family life, the areas of community life, their personal education, and, and all this, we try to monitor and keep them moving, keep them meeting their goals. I'd also, I also think it's important to realize that the people that are being served by this are all people who've struggled, and they've all hit a point where they said, "I need to do something," and they want, they want success, they want to do better. And they're coming and they're trying to find a place, and we have some means to do We're also rewarded, and our community is rewarded, when we do have, as the students do progress, they become a part of the community. Instead of having to receive money to help them out, they're paying taxes, they're outspending money, they're getting jobs, they're getting better jobs. And I think what we all share in common also is, we all share this concept of the value of the program. We see it's valuable. We put this time in for free, and I don't care that I don't get any money from it because I know it's a good thing. On a personal level, I've enjoyed getting to know my students, I've made some good friends, have the opportunity to see things from their perspective, learn a little bit about their culture. I've been invited to birthday parties, I've been invited to first communions, things like this that I wouldn't have been to otherwise. And just on a more, even more personal level, the fact that I do this tutoring, it's, it makes my life more meaningful. It's, I feel good every time I've done it. I know, I know I've done something good for a day. And I'd also like you to know that our volunteer hours are not just the twice-weekly, one-and-a-half-hour sessions at the library with the students. That's the crux of our thing. There's some preparation time, that's a small amount too, but most of us are also volunteering when there's fundraisers, they're, they're baking things, they're sitting at tables at the bake sales, they're out at the booth at the Flower Festival, working there. Every time there's a volunteer, there's a project, a fundraising project, the tutors are here. And they're, they display a kind of dedication and enthusiasm that would be difficult to find in other programs. I'm sure the city would be envious and like to have dedicate, dedicated volunteers coming in here and do free work the way we do it for this program. But this, to me, it's a reflection of the value of the program, that people are willing, not just to do the tutoring, but they're willing to go out and help, help raise the money to, to keep the program going. Now, also, I'm pretty sure that if you don't give us this money, those of us who are tutoring, we'd still be doing it. We'll still go into the library, we'll keep our students, we'll meet with them, but eventually, we're going to run out of materials, there won't be any books for them. Eventually, someone's going to, they move on, there are new people coming in. We, we won't be able to go out and train new tutors if they decide that they want to come in and be tutors. We don't have the, we won't be able to do the intake that's, that's necessary where the, the new students are interviewed and tried to get matched with, with tutors. And just alone, we would not be able to, or writing grants is another thing that Christina does. I don't think volunteers are going to be able to do that kind of thing. So we're kind of at a life and death situation for this program, and I think it's too valuable of a program to let it die. And also, I think when you look at how this program operates, you saw the numbers up there, considering other budget items, I think this is a relatively small amount of money, and what gets returned back to the city, I think is, it's hard for me to measure it, but I, I think that it's, it's a sound investment in something. We're investing in people, and I would hope that you see your way to making this money available for us, keep our program going. Thank you. See, I guess, right now, though, I'd like to introduce one of the students, and her name is Enivek Lopez, and you can hear right from what this program means to her.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Enivek Lopez. I feel proud to be in this program. This program changed my life, and I, I getting better in my life because I had halls every six months, and I, I helped my family in the school because I may go for my family too. I'm a student with the Lompoc Library Adult Literacy Program. I hope you can help us to keep going with this program because it's a special program. You will see the difference with the people who had families and we cannot going to the school, regular school. We had children, and this program helped me to keep my job because they had, they had different rules and different requirements for, for the job new, and this program helped me to keep up with them. I had a good dream, I hope so, this program can help me. And I'm, I'm working a single mom, and this is the only way I can balance my work, my family and my education. I want to be a nurse, I'm a CNA now, I work hard for my family, the economy is not good, and this program helped me to get a, a part-time job because one is not enough. I need to support my family and everything, you know? And I'm very thankful for this program. And this is the only way I can be a student in the library. And also, I bring my kids to the library. It's a good place to bring the kids to the library. And they have books, activities, and computers, and that's the only way I can, I can learn something else. The other way, I cannot make my dream. That's why I'm here. Please help us to keep this program, please.
Thank you.
My name is Julie Rose Menecucci, and I would like to say how important the literacy program is to the city of Lompoc. Being a member of the Subcommittee for Initiating a Supportive Business Environment Through Education, as well as being a literacy tutor for the library's adult reading program, I have seen firsthand how important supporting this community through education is. My student has grown so much in his reading and writing skills, along with his self-esteem and confidence. I hope the council will find a way to support this valuable program. Thank you.
Marilyn, City Council, I just want to give, thank you for giving me the privilege right now to, to speak on behalf of the, of the library.
You have to tell us your name.
And my name is Andrew Satrin. So I just want to share a story with you. All of us do not have equal talent, but all of us should have an equal opportunity to develop our talent. John F. Kennedy, the thirtieth president of the United States. Knowledge has been the driving force of this country. Historically, we have succeeded because our citizens were educated and determined. Our country was not built on the foundation of second place nor did it encourage mediocrity. This country was built by winners, by dreamers, and by sweat bore from relentless attention to be the best. This experience given to me was no more of a blessing than a dream come true for me. I've always wanted the experience to teach others, and I was fortunate enough to find this program, the Adult Literacy Program in the Lompoc Public Library. I met a man, Roberto, who wanted nothing more than to read to his child. Four years and a thousand hours later, he has read multiple books to his child, helped both of his children with their homework, and completed five out of six requirements to earn his general education diploma. Because of this journey, both he and I were able to fulfill our dreams, his being the most important one. This program gives the gift of making dreams come true, and like any dream, it came with hard work and the willingness to fight for that dream. Without this program, neither Roberto nor I would have ever met. The friendship has honestly made me a better person. I've longed for the opportunity to give back to my community and thus have set my future goals to become a basic military training instructor. Never would I have had the courage to take on this daunting task without the experiences I have had. Roberto gave me that courage. In this world falling on hard times, it is imperative to keep the programs like this one alive. The little it takes to keep it going gives back tenfold. What does it give back to the community, a question that needs an answer? Men and women are afforded the opportunity to expound upon their education, which is invaluable. Like our future generations, who, who we spend so much time growing and educating to take our place, the program at the library has given that same golden opportunity for people outs, outside the high school age to become more productive, educated, and financially stable citizens in this community. Their willingness, eagerness to not give up, not give in, not let external factors drive them to disparity, and to raise themselves to a higher level is what makes this community strong. This program is the very program that gives that opportunity. Their hard work combined with their tutors' efforts makes those dreams come true. I'm glad to have been a part of it and know in the depth of my soul, it is something that needs not only to be given a chance to thrive, but ultimately needs to be bolstered to open the opportunity for more individuals chasing after their dream. Their dream, ultimately, we all hold as Americans, the dream to live a life full and free, full of hope and full of hardship. I implore you to relook at this program, what it offers, who it helps, and how it serves this great community. It is a rewarding experience and greatly enhances and affects the lives of the people who want nothing more than to make it better. And by being better, stronger, the lives of those affected are great, the children of those are empowered, are encouraged, because their role models are stronger, smarter, and in the end, the community of art and flowers flourishes. Roberto has flourished. Through his learning and understanding, he has kept, he has been captivated by reading and writing and the language and many other subjects. When he earns the GED, he plans on becoming an electrician. Soon, Lompoc will have another educated, enthusiastic, talented, technically proficient electrician charged with the willingness to learn and aptitude to excel because of this program, the Adult Literacy Program at the Lompoc Public Library. General Hoyt S. Van Buren, Second Air Force Chief of Staff, said, "Air power alone does not guarantee America's security, but I believe it best exploits the nation's greatest asset, our technical skill." What this means to me is it is not just the objects in our lives that win the day, it is our devotion combined with our talented men and women. I am Andrew Satrin, a Staff Sergeant in the United States Air Force, a Lompoc Public Library tutor, and a better person for having gone through this amazing journey. Thank you for your time. I would also like to introduce to you my inspiration and one of the greatest people I've ever met in my entire life, Roberto.
I'll go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor.
One time, Molly.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Roberto, I'm from Mexico, I came to the United States about twenty years ago. I have been working in tough jobs like harvesting walnuts, beans, and all the kinds of vegetables in the fields of Lompoc. I always thought that I could never have better job opportunities because I didn't speak English. I decided to join the literacy program at the Lompoc Library. I was, it was hard to join, I was afraid of not knowing what was coming, but once I joined, I felt more comfortable because things were explained to me in a way where I could understand things better. This program is also good that I know not only how to speak English, but I can read and write. I also decided to go for the GED, and thanks, thanks to this program, I'm very close to passing it. I met my tutor, Andrew, who has helped me for a long time, he's a very good tutor. I urge you, please, not cut this program, because there are many people like me who couldn't, like, who like to learn English. I know for a fact this program is excellent to help them. The best thing about the program is that I was able to meet Andrew after work. We met when it was convenient for both of us. Having a tutor who could explain the techniques of how to learn or understand more clearly is great. My wife, Marisela, has also joined the program. She says she can't believe how much she understands after joining it. We still need this program around because it will help many people like me to learn English, to succeed and to communicate with every, with everyone in this beautiful country. This program has helped me to help my kids with their education, with communicating with them. I want to become an electrician because I know it will make me and my family have more comfortable life. Because of the program, I understand more about reading, writing, math, which will help me get my electrician license. My plan is to eventually hire people to come work with me when I get my license. I would, I want them to have a job and learn the skills that I have. My goal is also to be able to help people to read and write English by becoming a tutor, because teaching people to understand will also, to understand English will, will also given them the same opportunities that I had. Thank you very much for listening to my story and for your support.
Thank you. Thank you, Andrew. Hot, one time, come on, you guys.
This concludes our presentation. Glad to try and answer questions if you have any.
Councilor Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. You know, if that doesn't make anybody listening or watching want to be a tutor, I don't know what would, so I'm like, sign me up, like, I'm ready to do this. This is wonderful, thank you for the presentation. You know, and, and I started thinking about it, you know, what a noble cause to be fighting for. We're sitting here this evening fighting for literacy, of all things. We just got done discussing visual blight in palm trees, and here we are talking about literacy. I mean, this is so fundamental, and I, and I say it in all seriousness, not to downplay the other important issues in our, in our community, but really, we're fighting for literacy here. So I remember at the joint meeting with the Library Board of Trustees, you know, I, I made the bold statement, you know, the library is one of my personal priorities, and I'm asking you to hold me to it. So tonight's my first opportunity to have you hold me to that commitment. You know, we, we talk about libraries being the most-used public facility, I can't, I mean, we've all said that how many times, really? And so let's not forget how often we really say that. And now is the time where we have to put our money where our mouth is. You know, it's the most-used public facility, this is one of the reasons why. I want to recall a memory of something we, we've done recently, and that was funding a non-sworn position in the police department. Do we all remember that occurring recently? So what I understand is that this position, although effective, is really treating the disease with a Band-Aid rather than curing it, whereas I see this program as part of the cure of the disease of violence and crime and substance abuse and all of these other terrible things. So for me, I cannot turn down this proposal. Now that said, I'm interested to hear what the rest of the community has to say during public comment, and I can be swayed. I also understand that the city's in a really tight fiscal position. For that reason, I would like, the question I would like to ask staff, Ms. Gerald, is if we were to consider a part-time being from seventy-one percent to a true fifty-one percent, so that'd be twenty hour, twenty-eight hours a week to a twenty hours a week, do you know approximately what the savings would be on that?
I can tell you that if you look at the budget for eleven-twelve, almost all the extras that we used to have in this program for books and other materials have been pared away. What basically, to answer your question... What basically, to answer your question, what we are funding is a person to be there for this program. And I can't tell you that exact amount. I'm sorry, I did not prepare that. And I guess the reason is, as Christina mentioned, this has gone from two people working in this program to her doing it at a reduced amount of time, having the added burden of, like, this week she is at the Flower Festival. She does fundraisers all year long, and she's very, very successful at it. In your report, she raised over $30,000, I believe, last year. A lot of that was one-time money, but I don't know of another small program in the city that has been that successful. But it has really taken a toll on her and on the program. We have students that are waiting to enroll. We have to have her there to provide the training so that tutors can be trained to teach the students who are waiting. And believe me, these are people who want to change their lives now. They do not want to be a drain on the city of Lompoc. They have their goals that they want to accomplish and be part of our community. I will be glad to work with finance to get that cost for you if that's what needs to happen. We are aware of the budget constraints that we're all working under.
Right. So I understand that you guys actually waited to ask for funding until this year. And so, you know, I appreciate that, and I don't want to detract from that. But understanding, you know, when we're really talking dollars and cents here, $21,186 from the general fund, you know, is a considerable amount. So if, you know, what I wanted to bring that up in the sense that if council's thinking of defunding the program, or excuse me, not granting funding for the program, let's first talk about other potential solutions. One of which came to me is bring it down from 71% to 50% time exactly. And there would be a cost savings associated with that in salary and benefits. Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, I'm willing to listen and think about it. I mean, there's always options, and I wanted to hand something out a little early on here to people about options here. Could this, Ms. Cho, could you hand these to people in the audience? I made several copies of them. I always look for options in case it decides not to go through. I just picked this up and read it. I hope everybody has a chance during discussion to read it. Like I say, looking for the money is where we're at.
I believe this is a computer-based series. This is nothing like the one-on-one tutoring that is one person to another. I've spoken with Victor, who does the vision about this program. We think it's fantastic, but it is in no way a substitute for the relationship-building and tutoring, the productivity that you can achieve by working one-on-one. For those of you who've been parents and you work with a child, you know what the difference is. So I too, you know, I think everyone's open to alternatives, but I also think...
I have no idea what that program is, Molly. I just read it, and I thought it was something that should be brought up tonight.
Right. It's a great program, but it is a computer-based entirely program. It is not a personal relationship.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know about marketableu.org. I started this organization. In fact, technically, I'm the president of the board, but I will be stepping down. It really has nothing to do with a literacy program. The purpose of marketableu.org is to teach basic computer skills. I mean, basic computer skills, how to use email, how to get started on an Excel spreadsheet. It does not, and it takes already the understanding that the students will know how to read and write. So, you know, we have to start with literacy first before they can come to marketableu. Anyway, but so...
It just, like it said on there, it just said to read and all that, and that's why it clicked with me.
Right. Anyway, you know, it is a wonderful program, and I, you know, give it all my best. But anyway, it will not in any shape or form ever replace a true literacy program like what the library does. I'd like to thank all the people that spoke tonight. I do understand what it's like to be a tutor and teach somebody how to read and write. I've done it myself, and it's probably the most rewarding thing that I've ever done, far more than being up here, believe me. Believe me. It is really a remarkable thing. It changes people's lives. I was a young individual, and I had a caretaker that did not know how to read. And I sat down and I taught her, and it really changed her life, and it changed my life, because it really changed that person's lives. And it is really, truly, probably, if we don't know how to read, we are not members, active members of society. And we need to be. We need to be active members of society. So I am in full support of the program, and right now, I can say that I'm willing to take that money out of the general fund to support this program. We did already done some changes to our budget from the time when we actually adopted it. As Councilmember Costa said, we have approved, you know, the police advocacy position. I think this position here needs to be funded, and it needs to be funded at the 71%, because that's what's needed. And if we don't do it, we're going to continue to have residents in this town that will not participate in society. And they need to participate in society. So, and you cannot participate if you don't read and write. So I'm in full support.
Councilmember Engel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. City Attorney, you better pay attention. You may have to stop me. Get your buzzer ready. I'm going to quote something. I believe it's from the Bible. If you give a man a fish, you'll feed him for a day. If you teach a man to fish, you feed him for life. This is pretty much what this is. I can't even imagine not being able to read to our children. My parents read to me every evening. I read to my children. I go over to my children's house and watch them read to their children. It is such an honor, a blessing, to be able to read to your children. I can't even imagine not being able to read to them. Also have a little note here. Some of you remember a council member that was on the council a couple of years ago, Tony Durham. His favorite phrase was, "This is a no-brainer." And in many cases, it is. It's not if we fund the program, it's how much we fund. That is the discussion that we'll have to have as to how much. But I also want to thank you for coming up here and speaking. It took a lot of courage to come up and tell your stories. They are touching stories. They bring back some memories of my childhood. I had childhood friends that, I lived in a small rural community. Their parents didn't read. They came over to our house in the evening, and my parents read to them, and just the joy on their faces that they had. I also remember that several months ago, or a little while ago, we did fund a position. It was, I believe, was a victim's advocate position. And Councilmember Costa, Councilmember Mert, you both said it was sort of putting a Band-Aid on a situation. This is trying to put a cure to the situation. This really is an economic development situation we have here. We all said that economic development is our number-one priority. We're going to help get these people to become productive citizens. Quote, this gentleman said he wants to become an electrician. He wants to start his own business. I wish him all the luck in the world, because we give him the tools, he opens up his business, and he feeds three more families by his business. So I also want to hear from the public, but it's pretty much, as Tony said, a no-brainer.
Okay. Now we'll have public comment. Who would like to speak? Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Anne Rouge. I've had several hats on my head. Tonight, I am talking as President of the Library Board of Trustees. Our Board of Trustees unanimously directed staff to come before you with this presentation. I appreciate your comments. I'm having a hard time because I'm in tears. My training is as a teacher. I taught preschool children in Isla Vista, and it was low-income families, and a lot of the families could not read or write. I tried my darndest to help them, and we, I sort of did tutoring for the children and the parents. So there is a great reward from this. And as Bob said, it is a no-brainer. This country was founded on literacy, on getting all our citizens involved in what we do in life in this country. And you all know this. I'm talking to the choir here. I wanted to thank the people who came. The gentleman who's the tutor from the Air Force was very, very eloquent. I'm not that eloquent. I'm very emotional right now. Your past comments, you spent at least an hour and a half talking about trees. I think this is more important than trees. I'm sorry, but I do. This is people. And without the people, there wouldn't be trees, so. And it's about the future of the city. You've got to help these people. And, you know, we're asking for $21,000 today, but this program, I hope, will be able to continue, and we wouldn't have to go through this every year. And if there is some way that the thing can get financed, it would be ideal. Right now, our state and federal government are cutting. One of the most important things in our society is our books and our reading and our libraries. So I hope that you will at least give us the $21,000 for now, but make plans that we're going to have to keep this program going, because it is very important. And in an ideal world, instead of cutting the director or staff down to, what was it, 50%, it should be funded 100%, as I'm sure you're aware. But I hope for now, you can find that money, and then think of the future and what we're going to do about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nicholas Gonzalez, resident. Honorable Mayor, City Council. A program that provides a means to improve one's level of education is definitely a program we cannot afford not to have. I stand here before you. I come up to this podium many times, and I present information because I can read. If you cannot read, you cannot participate. I can go through many different city reports where different objectives are trying to be accomplished, and in the absence of one being able to read, write, and communicate effectively, none of those would be able to be accomplished. I've seen how one's education level can have a dramatic impact on a family, whether it's from a parent participating more in a child's education, whether it's an apparent being able to intervene and prevent a child from entering a gang, whether it's from a parent being able to go to the next step and start additional higher education. It helps. So I would implore you to consider this and look it as an investment in the community that will have a significantly greater return than the cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Hi, my name is Steve Storman. I'm a Lompoc resident. Excuse my voice, I'm a little sick. I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I felt compelled to. Please don't turn this into an issue of haggling over dollars and cents. I've been in the position of being staff, working for, you know, a nonprofit or a public project, working for something that I believe in. If a woman here, the director, says that, or if they're asking for a very specific number of money, you know, what, $21,000 something, $186, they're asking, if they're asking for that amount of money, if she's asking for a 28-hour-a-week position, I would strongly believe it's because it can't be done with less. In fact, I would probably assume that it can't be done at its current level, which is why she's working unpaid overtime, which is what I'm hearing is happening. So please don't make this an issue of haggling over dollars and cents. This is something that this community needs. You talk about the economic development in this community, and, you know, it comes into a lot in talking about zoning, and talking about building, and talking about business and bringing business in. These are the people of this community. This is the economic development that we need. This is, excuse me, when, to put it in those terms, because as if it needs that additional justification, to put it in the terms of economic development, these are people who have jobs in Lompoc. These are Lompoc residents who will keep the money in the community. This is what actual economic development is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Yedida Devries, and I have only one small thing to add to my very tall housemate's astute comments, and that's what impressed me about the program's presentation was the precise numbers, was the data, and was the repeated use of the word "goals." I was impressed that they came up here with, they talked about having goals for their students, and it's very clear that they have very precise, measurable goals for themselves as well, which they have met time and time again. And I think that, I mean, that's sort of something that the city has had, struggled with with other programs that have come up here and asked for things. And so I think it's only right that the city reward the program that's doing it right, that came here, right, that did not come here last year, but did come here this year only when it was absolutely necessary, and then came here with a very precise, data-driven, goal-oriented request. And so I want to thank them for that, and I hope not only that they get all of their money and maybe even some more, because they clearly deserve it, but that, we see that, hopefully they've set a trend for other programs as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm a trustee of the Board of the Library, but I'm not going to speak as a citizen. I was not planning to come up here and speak, because they did a wonderful job in explaining the program. But, you know, their stories brought a lot of memories. Many of you, I have had conversations with some of you, and your question is, well, why can they use adult ed? Why can't they use the school systems? Well, I remember growing up, my mom used to get up at 5:00 in the morning, would not get home till 7:00 p.m., and had to come home to four children. So how do you expect someone to go to night school or go to, there has to be a flexibility. Another thing I hear about, you know, complain about immigrants is, well, why can't they learn the language? Why can't they learn the laws? Why can't they learn this? Well, this is a program that are teaching immigrants who do not speak the language, who are eager to learn and appreciate what this country has to offer them, and embrace it. And, you know, talking about $20,000 or $21,000 and, like they pointed out, exact cent, money, dollar to the dollar, it goes to tells, it tells you that we're not here to overburden the city, we're just asking for the minimum, minimum that it takes to run this program. And taking into account that we're not just relying on the city alone, this organization gets funds, I mean fundraisers, from the county, from different, you know, grants. So it's not like we're just coming to you and saying, okay, give us the money. No, we go out there and seek this money. So, like I said, it just brought a lot of memories, and I think that we do, and this is a perfect program, that is working. this is a perfect program, that is working. You saw two people come up here, and I'm sure there's many more that have success stories. So I hope that it does compel you to, please give us the full amount. And I know there's always ways of finding money. Some of you say, well, there's no money. There's money. If we can plant trees, we can fund this. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for everyone to keep in mind, the tree money's in account, and it would not be possible to take that money and spend it on this.
All the $2,900 are going to this, okay?
The $2,500 perhaps, yeah. Okay, who else would like to speak? Last chance, going once, going twice, gone. Okay. Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Marilyn. My apologies if I turned into the bad guy for a quick second by suggesting the 50% funding. I do that because we want our lights to turn on and our clean water to come in and our dirty water to go out. So this is one of many very important priorities to me especially. So I suggested that only if it needed to be a compromise. It doesn't sound like it needs to be, which is exciting for me. One thing we haven't discussed, and Mr. Wilkie, or City Administrator, this is something you can speak to, but in regards to having the money in the general fund, is it there for us to allocate to this program?
If you're talking about general fund reserves, there's approximately 25% of our operating budget in reserves, so for $21,000, yes.
So this would have to come out of reserves?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you. Like I said before, I'm in full support of this program with all the money that it needs. And I think I will not compromise one little bit on that one. I think this program is essential. If there is any issues that we need to use it, I think, you know, come out of reserves, I can give you some examples of things that we have to take out of reserve that were totally uncalled for, like the $140,000 that we had to return to some agency because of inefficiencies in the city. So I gladly take $21,000 with the change of the, up to the 60 cents out of the reserves for this program. And I have no issues with doing that because we have done things like this in the past to things that were far less important and with far less priority than this.
Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Earl, I have one quick question for you. The, we say there's still a possibility of getting something from the state. We have no idea. Do you have any idea how much that might be?
Yes. We contacted the State Library and asked them to let us know what our part of that would be. And we were told that, from what they told us, I determined it's likely to be about $7,000. We really don't know what percentage of the funding, if any, could be saved, but what I mentioned was that that would take the shortfall down to about $13,000. We just had an update today, a legislative update, that the goal the governor had set was to finish the budget by this Friday, but there are clearly many, many issues that are coming forward that will need to be discussed, so that timeframe is pushed back. So we don't know when we'll find out anything.
Okay, thank you.
Come on back. On the subject of reserves, what are the library's reserves at this time?
Let me get my folder, and I'll have some more of those exact numbers for you just now.
Okey-dokey.
Marilyn, while she's doing that, if I can make a statement?
Sure. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. I would argue if council is willing to fund the gap as presented by staff at the full amount, that if that $7,000 from the state, that would be potentially from the state, but not use that to pull back any money we've already given, but commit that full amount and then allow the program to utilize that $7,000 if they get it to supplement this program further. That would be my argument with that, as opposed to pulling it from the amount that we've already, if we decide to do that, dedicate this evening. Thank you.
It's anticipated that the library's reserve fund at the end of this fiscal year will be approximately $336,572. Our reserve was used at a level of, or is being used at a level of about $15,000 this year, but the residual impact of the defunding by the State Library will really hit us in the coming budget year. I've talked with the City Administrator and Mr. Wilkie about that at some length. We've allocated $45,443 from the reserves for next year, so that's quite an increase. And in addition to that, we've, we know that the costs are a little bit higher than we had predicted because of the cooperative that we pay to belong to and their loss of state funds as well. So at the end of 12/13, we will probably be at about $281,000, and that is a hefty chunk of our reserve to be using in one year, the 40, 45. So like you, we hope for better times to reduce the amount we have to draw on that.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Lingle? If there's no other comments, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Councilmember Martin?
No, I was just ready to second the motion.
You know where my struggle is. I mean, it's the same one we have every time. There are wonderful things we want to do, and some to economic development will let us do all those things, so. Go ahead. Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that we allocate funding from the general fund reserves to cover the cost of the, cover the cost of maintaining the Lompoc Library Literacy Program in its current format during the fiscal year 2012, 2013, to the amount of $21,186. However, if the state comes through with money, I'd like that remount to be reduced by the amount to the state. So I want the program fully funded, but if money comes from the state, we can reduce our amount by that amount. It'll be my motion.
Hang a second. I'll second it. Go ahead.
Councilmember Lingle, just to clarify, you understood that I was saying the opposite thing in regards to $7,000?
Okay, now let's talk about that. Councilmember Costa?
I'm, I'm, there's really, it's a pretty clear line, either you think it should go one way or the other. I think that $7,000, that's potentially from the state. We're not even sure we're going to get it. We're not even sure if that's really going to be the amount. And if it does come through, I think should really just supplement the program in a very minor way. I think that, you know, the commitment of the $21,186, you know, should be there regardless of that, of the money coming from the state.
I concur with Councilmember Costa. I believe that we need to fund the $21,186. If the state has the gracious move to provide us with an additional $7,000, that would be much needed by the program anyway. So I would just put it in the program if that money comes in addition.
Councilmember Lingle?
You know, and I completely understand. However, if the county just this week did not come through with $6,000, we'd be looking at $28,000. So being the devil's advocate, why don't we award the $28,000 then, plus whatever comes from the state? If, if the county, I know we're not, we're not going to do that, but that's sort of the way it sounds like we're going. I want the program to be funded. However, I also, yes, I want to keep the lights on, the water running. $7,000 isn't going to break the city, we all know that, but we have to be somewhat, you know, judicious in the way we spend our money. $7,000, we may not even get it. And we'll fund the entire amount for the $21,186, one way or the other. If the state is gracious enough to help us with it, so be it. If they're not, we're going to see the program continue on for the remainder of this year.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm just kind of, as far as I'm concerned, it should come from library reserves because it's a library project, so I'm halfway to where I want to go. That's, if I'm as far out as I'm going to stretch. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for, to set the record straight, the lights and the water are going to still keep going because they're not part of the general fund, so they belong to their own funding. So I understand that we want to say that there is many other expenses that come, that are part of the city, but the general fund is primarily safety, as we all know, public safety, and the library and some of the parks programs. So it has nothing to do with the lights are going to go out because we're losing $21,000 or that the water is going to stop running. Those are funded in of themselves, and they're very actually viable, and we all pay for it because we pay for our electricity and our water. So this is not that, the problem there. Now, having heard Councilmember Lingle, you know, I think we're kind of trying to split in here, here, and I'm trying to come to a consensus of some sort. If the money is, if the state comes with the $7,000, should we return them? You know, I really don't think so because this program is really at a bare minimum. And as it has been said, the staff member volunteers, she's not getting paid. All the tutors, there is over 60, they're all volunteers. The library has been continuously been cut for years and years and years by the state, by the county, and by the city. Why should we take reserves from the library when they're going to need it because unfortunately the trend is there, the cuts will continue? The, those reserves have to go to keep the doors open for all the public, right? That's where those reserves have to go, not to the literacy program. So I urge the council to really look and really wear what we're talking about here. We're talking about teaching our residents to read and write so they can become active members of this society. If we need to put our money there, it's us. I mean, this is as critical as having police on fire, in my view. Why? Because these are not members of the society if they cannot read.
Councilmember Starbuck, and then Councilmember Costa, then Councilmember Lingle.
Just a quick question, Ms. Chil. You said earlier there were how many people waiting to get into this program? The extra $7,000 would never shorten that list, then? No? Just a question.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. Councilmember Martin, I think you just misspoke ever so slightly in that Ms. Chil does have salary. She is paid. She's the only paid employee, though, and she's not paid at 100%, so I just want to throw that out there. And I was making sort of a fiduciary duty statement earlier when I was alluding to the lights turning on, you know, it's a complex web, our budget, and in fact, there are things in the general fund that go towards those things, such as sharing of administrative costs. So those things aside, just to clarify, you know, I think that we're, they're at the bare minimum. I think that, you know, this $7,000 coming from the state, you're willing to give $21,000 if we don't get the money. So why not just be willing to give it regardless? Thank you.
Councilmember Lingle?
Again, just for clarification, my motion takes nothing out of the library reserve. I hope you all realize that. My motion will completely fund this program. So I'm going to stick with my motion. I'd like to call the question.
Okay. Can I get my five cents worth in first? Can't even count the number of times people have talked to me about things that I care deeply about that would be great things that we could do. And my comment is, we're very, we're in very difficult times, and I wish you'd look for another way to do that, fund that, accomplish that, and many times, they're able to. And that's why I'm struggling with this because when I say that yes to this, and it's not that it's not very valuable, far be it, then it makes the next decision and the next decision and the next decision very, very difficult. So I'm willing to support your motion, and I guess that's further than I intended to go. Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Marilyn. I'd like to hear from Councilmember Starbuck. I would like to hear from you. Because to be quite honest, I mean, I think that we're all in support of the idea, and I would, if anything, then we need to take this in two different motions, because I think all of us want a yes vote on a portion of that. If that's okay with you, Councilmember Lingle, I would hate for it to come down again to a split vote on the record for something like this. Does that make sense? So I was just curious what Councilmember Starbuck had to say.
My big tear on this is the hours that we spent during the budget and the fact that we said right at the beginning of budget hearing and doing the budget that the main goal of the council was to not get into the reserves. I understand that there's reasons we need to get into the reserves, but I'm just trying to draw the own line myself onto how far, you know, what to do. I mean, it's, I know we're talking $7,000, and we're talking a principle here. I'm willing to support either way. I'm just, it's my own thing, and going back to when we first did the budget.
Councilmember Martin?
I would like to suggest, as Councilmember Costa said, if we can do this in two motions, I think, you know, I certainly want the full amount to be given out, but Councilmember Lingle added on this, well, the $7,000 will have to be returned. I would ask that we do two motions.
I think we just solve it with a, with a decision. I'm not willing to extend the initial, additional $7,000. Each person say your piece. Start from the left.
Mr.?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I just want, it's sort of unusual, but I'd like to ask Mr. Gerard one more question.
Surely. We're doing unusual things.
Mr. Earl, you, you came to this eve, this meeting this evening asking for a specific amount to fully fund the program. You may or may not have thought you were going to get it, you were probably hoping to get, you're hoping to get it, you probably would have walked away probably at least somewhat happy if you had got $10,000. I don't know. I really don't know. I mean, you came with the intention of getting $21,000. Now there's a matter of $7,000, and I'm sure you'd like to have that. You understand the situation of the city, and I, I hate to put you in this position, but where would you like to see us go?
Okay, I appreciate the question. I will say again to you that we, as someone mentioned in comments, we did not come back to council until it was clear with the trigger bill in December and the announcement from the state in January that there was absolutely no funding for public libraries. We were holding out hope then. I am, I think, a realistic optimist. We have come up with every, looked at every grant that has come through. We're reapplying to the Wish You Well grant that funded $10,000. We will go back over every possibility, but honestly, without the $21,000, we came here knowing that we might lose this program. And I understand that there are many good causes in town, but when you look at something that is, is embedded in the library service and is, is working and doing a great service that a few people have bravely stood up and talked about this evening, it is an emotional issue for me, too. It's very inspirational to see them at work in the library every day. It's very inspirational to see them at work in the library every day. I would ask for every penny you can give us because it brings this program up to a level where Christina Chil, who, like Cindy McCall, is out every weekend trying to work with all kinds of different groups to make things better for this city, she's out there, too, seeking grant, doing fundraisers, her volunteers and her students are doing the same thing. So, you know, I think it would be a disservice to her if I tell you she could not really use this money to make the program better. We all understand that you have very big constraints that you're working in, so I, that's the best answer I can give you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to withdraw my motion, then.
I would like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Just pointed where the second needs to withdraw also.
Yeah, second. Yeah. Okay.
I would like to make a motion to allocate funding from the general fund reserves to cover the cost of maintaining the Lompoc Library Literacy Program in its current format during the fiscal year 2012, 2013, and the amount for the funding would be twenty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars.
I'll second that. Any further discussion? It's not that I don't like your program. I hope you understand. I'd be happy to vote for twenty-one thousand. Let's take a break. You're up.
Okay.
Jim, can you shut the door back there, please? You're going to have to work a little harder. That closer is not very happy.
I would do it.
All right. Item number seven.
Mayor, councilmembers, I have a brief presentation, but before I get into that, I'd just like to go briefly over the staff report. Back in 2009, in October, which this graph is from, I made a presentation regarding the implementation of a four-tiered rate increase between 2009 and 2012. In that presentation, the criteria for what a rate should cover, what a, for a utility, there are four components. It should cover operational expenses, and by that definition, the rates that we're collecting right now are adequate to meet our, our operating obligations. The second thing is to provide for capital replacements and capital improvements. The current budget that we're in, we're able to do that as well because of the differential between our revenues and our expenses. The third thing is to be able to meet our debt obligations. We have debt obligations both through NCPA and here at home. And the fourth item that is part of a rate, an adequate rate, is the ability to preserve cash reserves. I'm going to focus in on cash reserves because in the current environment, we are meeting the other three objectives, and we should be able to meet those into the foreseeable future, at least through the next two budget, the next budget cycle in 2013. The reason I want to concentrate on cash reserves is because over the last five to seven years, and I'll show you here a little bit, we've had some cost pressures. This slide shows a representation of about eight years of average costs between 1989 and 1996, this, this graph. And the averages are somewhere between six and eight million dollars over that period, and probably around seven over that whole entire period. Beginning in 2002 and up through 2009, the power costs were anywhere between thirteen million as a high and probably about ten million dollars as a low. I present it in this format just to show you that differential. This differential has had to be made up in retail rates. The reason I use 1989 to 1996 is in 1996, the city, the council at that time implemented the deregulation cost adjustment, which was a 1.5 cent per kilowatt hour charge for every single kilowatt sold in the city, all types, all categories of customers. From 1996 until 2006, a ten-year span, the city did not have any rate increases whatsoever but for that DCA collection for that time period. However, just in that seven-year period, we saw costs that were above what we had in the early 1990s of anywhere between seven million a top and probably here closer to three million. Each and every year, we had those costs over and above, even though we didn't have a increasing cost, a rate structure during, during that time period. One of the reasons why we had to have most of the rate increase that was proposed in 2009 was the unexpected run-up of power purchase costs in the 2007 to 2009 time period, and that was caused, this graph is, was provided to me from NCPA, and it shows a representation of oil prices, which is the red line, and then all the other lines are various types of streams of natural gas purchase prices. And for the period of time right here, natural gas is mostly produced for consumption in the U.S., in the U.S. Oil, a significant amount of oil comes from overseas. So this lockstep of price increases had no real basis in market forces. It was all pretty much based on commodity traders in Chicago using natural gas as just another type of investment, which has nothing to do with production of electricity or other uses of natural gas. This is a little bit longer time span of the oil price history between 2005 and 2012. And again, the spike that was seen on the last slide is this spike right here, and you'll see that it dropped dramatically in 2009 and has been, on average, inching up until it's right around a hundred dollars a barrel right now. And that's, that's the trend. This is, all these graphs were provided to me by NCPA. I was just trying to get them to assist me with putting this presentation into a little bit of perspective over time. Natural gas had a couple spikes, one in 2006 that had nothing to do with commodities trading. This spike right here is the one that coincides with the oil spike, but you'll notice that there's been a few spikes here and there, but over time, the price of natural gas has gone down, and that's primarily because of what Marilyn has been saying about the increased availability of natural gas in the North American continent, mainly because of shale and oil sand recoveries. Getting back to the first slide, there are two or three years at the very end of the 2007, 2008, 2009 period where our costs went up significantly because of that spike in natural gas and the oil price timeframe. And that, that, this line right here is the same as that last bit of the line and, from the first slide. What this shows, the darker blue line is our revenue stream for those, for that ten or twelve-year period, and the pink color, I guess, is our costs. And what you'll see is that early before the energy crisis, we had quite a large spread between our costs and our revenues to a positive extent. Since 2001 approximately, we had almost eight years where our costs exceeded our revenue stream. The reason why we had to have the second set of rate increases that would culminate in the July 2012 three percent rate that was approved in 2009 is primarily to recover the lost cash reserves accumulated during its timeframe. Only in the last year, 2011, has the revenue stream exceeded cost again. This is also a slide from 2009. It was the projection of what we thought would happen with cash reserves if we, if the rates were implemented, the eight percent rate in 2008, 2009, October 2009, another eight percent in July 2010, a six percent rate in 2011, and the three percent rate in 2012. That was the projection that we made back in 2009, and you'll see that we bottomed out right around 2010 at probably around three million dollars, a negative three million dollar deficit in cash reserves. This is the same graph, but updated for the activities that have happened since 2009. We, the, it bottomed out about the same time that we expected it would bottom out, based on the, the rates that would be, that were implemented. It bottomed out a little bit lower, a little bit more positive than we expected in 2009. What has happened primarily because of the favorable nature of our purchase power costs this year, last year, and next year, this uptick has been much more steep and much more positive. We were expecting to get most of our recovery from the revenue side, but we're getting additional benefit from having reduced expenses as compared to what our budget was going to be. The nice thing about having this is we still get to reach our projected revenue requirement level by 2015, 2016, but we, it's all basically because of.
Councilmember Martin wants to ask you a question.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you, but I need clarification, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the graph that you're showing here right now, it is showing a reduction, it says in there, through 2011, and a three percent reduction on July 1st, 2012.
Correct.
So you're already accounting that this is going to be approved?
I.
Right?
I took the projection, the model that we used in 2009. I updated it for the results through 2011, and then I modeled it for a permanent three percent reduction, just to see what it would, what it would show, because that reduction.
I, I understand. I wanted to make sure that I was understanding it. Thank you.
And that's a good question, because I actually modeled, deferring the three percent for a year, I modeled, the, the original projection actually included, because it was outside the timeframe that we were looking at, it actually included a six percent reduction in 2015, which is why this levels out. But that was not included in the original rate proposal in 2009, because it was several years out, and we wanted to see what resulted from the, the rates that were implemented for this three-year period. There's not much difference between these two. The, the main difference is that we are better off because of the reduced power costs that we experienced last year, we are experiencing this year, and we expect, expect to experience This is a little hard to read. This was the, this is also provided by NCPA. This is an estimate for the average rates for all of the NCPA customers, as well as PG&E and SMUD, which is a large mini that is not part of the NCPA group. Basically, what green means up here is that we were, all of the agencies were in a positive situation as compared with PG&E. That yellow that's up there just showed that, I guess, the City of Biggs was fairly close to PG&E's rate in the commercial sector. I put this one up here because it was the closest estimate that NCPA did to our first rate increase that was done in October of 2009. And they had another one that was probably presented at the last NCPA annual meeting. This is the estimate for the 2012 rates for all the utilities, PG&E and SMUD. In this particular case, PG&E's rate has gone up all across the board, so even though there have been some rate increases, our residential rate is still favorable as compared to PG&E's rates, about four cents less. However, our commercial and our industrial rates are either slightly closer to PG&E rates or in respect to the A-13, compared to their E-20 rate, we're a little bit higher than their rate. It just shows we have some opportunity to rate, to modify our structure to help us get some economic incentives for the commercial industrial side. That was all the slides I had prepared. I would like to go over a couple other things related to my staff report. One of the differences between the city's electric utility and the other major utilities, which is the water utility, wastewater, and solid waste, is in 1994, the city council actually adopted a revenue reserve policy. So there's a policy that's been enacted for the electric utility, whereas for the other three utilities, there's just general guidelines, best practices, but there's nothing written at the council level about what the levels of reserves should be for those other three utilities. As I mentioned, when the slides are up there, we hit the bottom of our actual cash balances in June of 2010, and since then, we've recovered, and by June of 2012, we expect to have positive reserves that qualify for the reserve policy of about four and a half million dollars. So we're, we are well on our way to getting back to our reserve policy levels, but we have been out of compliance with that reserve policy since June of 2007.
What was our negative number that we started from?
It was around three million dollars at June of 2010, roughly three million dollars.
So we were minus three million?
Yeah.
And now we're positive five million?
Four and a half, yeah.
Four and a half.
Somewhere in that neighborhood, yeah. The, my original proposal from 2009 included a three percent rate increase at the tail end of the other three rate increases. That was to just get us to the point where we could make sure that we met our reserve requirements. However, if the council so desires, my secondary recommendation would be to delay that three percent final step for a year to see how close we get to our reserve levels just from cost savings. And the last proposal that I have is just providing you with opportunity to make a, an alternate recommendation.
I have no idea who was first. I'll start with you, Dirk. Councilmember Starbuck.
One of the questions I have about our electrical utility and reading back years ago was, as the consultants that put some reports together said, "The Wi-Fi continued drain," which in May of 2009 showed four million dollars that the electrical had loaned or put into the Wi-Fi. Are we still doing, what is the situation with Wi-Fi and electrical? It didn't come up in the report, but I know they're interlinked.
The utility director did a lot of changes in the last year or two regarding the Wi-Fi system. As you may recall, the, the goal of the electric system and the water system is to get all the meters that are read on a monthly basis to be read automatically, and we're utilizing the Wi-Fi system to. And we're utilizing the Wi-Fi system to be the backfill trunk to pull that information back to City Hall. So instead of having the Wi-Fi system as a drain, because its customer base has not grown enough to make it a self-sustaining entity, the use of that for the, bringing back the, the reads from the meters is a service to both of those utilities. So both of the utilities are now using it as a service, rather than the electric fund providing money to support that service.
So water, electrical is not paying Wi-Fi?
Yes, they are. That's, that, they're paying for a service at this point in time, along with others in the-
Is Wi-Fi at this point then able to pay back electrical?
It, what, it, right now, for the 2012, 2013 year, we look to see that it's going to be a, a wash, so it won't have to borrow any more money from the electric utility. We hope that, in the future, that it will start to be able to start paying back some of that money. But at this point in time, we've got it to be a break-even situation.
There was, at one point, a lot of people were trying it out. So everybody tried it out, does like it, and now they're all paying for it, is that where we're at today?
Um, you mean-
It was being tried for a number of things.
Well, I know there's a number of customers that are, internal customers that are utilizing it. One thing I didn't mention was that the new RoboView cameras that are in the police cars, they are also utilizing the backhaul capabilities of the Wi-Fi system to bring back that video feed and the audio feed back to the dispatch area where they, where that information is stored and recorded. So there are there, others within the city, city users of the, of that system that are, is helping to make that a, a cost-neutral program on a-
So they're now paying, they're now paying for the service that they've tried out and liked?
Hmm.
Okay. I'm sorry, who? Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go back to this slide.
Okay.
And I have questions regarding, a couple of things in here, just by noting this. This is based on residential, but it's an average of 750 kilowatts per month. What, is that like an average household usage of electricity? And the reason why I'm asking this is because I do know that we have, depending on the usage, your usage, you know, how much you pay for it-
Pairs, yes.
And, and I do believe that PG&E plays with their little, with their rates differently than what NCPA does. So it's not really an apple-to-apple comparison to say you're lower than PG&E. So I want to get an understanding, are you doing an average of everything, or are you just doing what?
The, for the purposes of this, to make it as comparable as possible between the members, NCPA took it, the 750 for SMUD, and also, yeah, the 750 is for-
It's a use, I guess, it's a 750 kilowatts per month usage per household, I assume, that doesn't have electric heat, whatever, whatever. So, so again, you know, I mean, I don't know how fair the comparison is. That's, that's really all I'm trying to say. The second thing is that if you look at the list, Lompoc is one of the highest. And what is really surprising to me, for example, Santa Clara, Palo Alto, who is probably the richest city in the state of California, is lower than, than Lompoc, $12 versus 17. Is that dollars?
Per megawatt, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Well, it's-
It's 17-
It's cents per kilowatt hour, yeah.
Okay, cents, I'm sorry, okay. And then Santa Clara is 8.99. Santa Clara is, again, another very, you know, it's a large city, it, you know, they buy a lot of power for NCPA, but I am amazed to see the difference between, you know, most of the rates, Lompoc being right up there in the top as far as the most expensive rates, and then seeing large towns like Santa Clara be at 8.99. So the first question that comes to my mind is why, how can they manage to be so much cheaper than us?
Well, I, for Palo Alto, I use them as a good example. Palo Alto, it's all depends on your mix of resources. Palo Alto has, probably amongst all the NCPA members, they have the largest component of their rate is based on the Western allocation that they get. And Western is by far the cheapest resource that is available to any of our members. So the city of Lompoc only has about a five percent share of our, of our resources is in Western power. Palo Alto is more like 60 percent. So they're able to, to leverage that to be able to keep their rates low, because their overall resource, power cost, is much, much lower than, on average, per, per resident than ours is.
Now, is that allocation based on population, or is that strictly lobbying within NCPA?
It's got nothing to do with lobbying. It's more, the, it's almost, backing up a little bit, Western was started when the CVP corp was, the system was built in the 1950s, 1960s. At that point in time, member, eligible entities such as cities could contract with the CVP system to get a power allocation. For whatever reason, when those contracts were made, Lompoc got five percent of our, our power needs. Palo Alto got 60. The city of Gridley actually got about 90 percent of the needs. And it had nothing really to do with population. I don't think it had much to do with demographics. It was just-
But you just mentioned the city of Gridley, and there is 17.59 cents. So, you know, I, I'm a little, you know, I, I find it that within NCPA, there is a, you know, a large range of the cities, and I like to understand that better, why that is, is, and, and you know what I'm driving at? I am driving at exclusively to do, you know, a sanity check on our department, our electric department's efficiency. Are we running as efficient as we can? Are we running a shop that is efficient or, or not? If, if I were to say that within NCPA, all cities are pretty much the same as far as their allocations, as far as their, you know, their quotas, if you wish.
But I don't, I don't think they are.
Okay, so then that means that we need to have our NCPA representative start fighting for better allocations for Lompoc.
Well, well, the allocation with Western is based on a 20-year contract.
Okay.
So it's going to come up again in 2024. And the contract that was renewed in 2004, we had no ability to, we were lucky enough to keep the allocations that we had. Other entities saw that we had a very low-cost power structure, and in 2004, there's a significant amount of lobbying from entities that don't have a Western allocation, saying, "I want some of what they have." So it, it took a lot of lobbying on the behalf of all the NCPA members to retain the rights that we have today. The alternative was, we might have lost some or all of what we had in 2004, and we wouldn't even have that as a resource today. And then we'd have to rely on all the resources that we contract with NCPA for, like the Geysers, our, our part of the Lowdi Energy Center, some of the CTs that we're part of, and a, a big chunk of what we have to buy on an ongoing basis right now, until Lowdi comes aboard, we actually have to rely about 40 to 50 percent on the market. So when market rates change, we have to, we have to buy that power at the same market prices that Valley Cities have to buy it at, when, in the heat of the summertime, when prices are usually a little bit higher, even though we don't have the summertime heat and we don't have a summertime energy load, we still have to pay those same rates, because we're on the margins of about 25 to 50 percent of our power needs. That will get better as the Lowdi Energy Center comes, comes onboard, and when we can start buying our own gas at the opportune times, we'll be able to lower even more our average ongoing power cost and make, make the utility that much more efficient. The other question I think you asked was, are we operating our utility efficiently? The, the one part about that is, there, with Palo Alto and Santa Clara, there are some levels of efficiencies that they gain just by the number of customers they have. We would probably be much better off if we had a, a customer profile of 20,000 customers, rather than 15,000 customers, because we'd be able to spread, spread a lot of our fixed costs across more customers.
Yeah, but Trucky Donor, which probably is what, 20,000 people, has, you know, has a 14 cents, three cents lower than Lompoc. So, so, you know, again, you know, the number of customers-
They also have a large allocation of Western. They also have a large allocation of Western power. So their cost structure is lower than ours.
So maybe this Western power allocation is really what was driving these numbers?
Yeah. Those who have more have a lot more flexibility than those have less.
And when is our contract going to be over, and when can we try to negotiate a bigger allocation from that, from Western?
2024. And that will be a-
That takes care of that.
Well, we already went through it once, and we were able, we, being the whole family of NCPA, was able to protect that resource. And when it was attacked from many, many different sides, from groups that wanted to get access to that power. In fact, the federal government, almost every year, looks at our power, our cost structure for paying for Western, which is based on paying for the debt of the CVP system, they look at it and say, "Well, they should be paying market prices, and we'll take the difference and put it into the national debt." And that, we'd be paying market prices for something that we have always paid cost-based prices for. And that would be a huge loss for everybody that's in the NCPA group.
Thank you.
The saving grace on that is, take an act of Congress. Councilmember Coste.
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. That was actually, the main question that I had was in regards to the cost difference. We were the second highest there, as noted by Councilmember Martin. But I do have a different question now, and that is, with 4.5 million in reserves, you said that'll be the number in July of this year?
Approximately, yeah.
So do you think that if we, we don't decrease three percent, but we don't also increase the, the planned three percent, but we stay at the rate that we're at now, when do you think, I didn't see that table anywhere. Did you, did you have that anywhere?
I don't have a table for it, but when I did the analysis, which was probably about three, four weeks ago, by deferring the three percent for a year, will reduce, it will extend one year our ability to get to our reserve targets. If we do the three percent reduction for one year, and then institute the three percent increase after that, it would extend the time that we meet our reserve levels two years.
Yeah, to me, it seems silly to decrease three percent this year, to just increase it three percent again next year. To me, it would make more sense, especially in regards to the reserve policy, to keep it consistent where it's at now, understanding that, you know, although we won't hit our reserves as fast as if we increased it, we're still getting there at a rate that we're all comfortable with.
And we're also getting there, even if we do a one-year reduction, we still meet the reserves in 2016, which is still three years ahead of what we planned to do in 2009.
But the assumption is that you decrease three percent only for a year to then increase it again?
Yeah.
So to me, that seems sort of counterproductive to what we want to do here. We want, you know, to defer any additional increases until we get to that reserve limit. Once we get there, then we can talk about decreasing at that point. I think, I'm not comfortable decreasing three percent to just increase a yearly or, that doesn't, yeah. So tell me again, the, if we were to keep, if we were to not decrease for the year, when would we meet the set reserve amount for, as dictated by policy?
If we just deferred the scheduled increase from July 1, 2012, to July 1, 2013, it'll just defer that, attaining that goal by one year.
Well, potentially, that's the estimate, but really, it could be shorter, depending on-
Well, that's assuming that, in that timeframe, the, the cost of power stays at the levels that we are current, that NCPA is currently budgeting for.
And I'm sorry, tell me one more time, what is the year that the assumption would be if we deferred it for a year?
2015.
2015. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let me talk about one thing here, just to get on track. Any of these things that we do are a short-term action, because to take a long-term action requires an amendment of the rate study. So the reason that I talked about going down this path is that we don't kick a rate study loose again if we make a short-term decision based on the current position we find ourselves in because of reduced purchase power costs. Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brad, do any of your, a lot of charts you had up there, do any of your charts refer to just a suspension of the three percent coming up in July 1st? Just an indefinite suspension? I mean, not just a one-year suspension, a one-year deferral, just a suspension? Because if you had the numbers you have right now, if you had the rates you have right now, when we did the rate increase in 2009, would it be, would it be safe to assume we would not be having this rate increase in 2012? Knowing what you know now, back in 2009?
Yeah, if I, if I knew that our power costs would be $2 million less than we thought they would be, even though three years ago, they were $2 million more than, than we thought they're going to be, then that $4 million spread would have allowed us not to even consider a three percent final rate change.
Right. So, I mean, we made some really good assumptions back then in 2009. It was painful for us that we're on the council then to have rate increases, but there hadn't been increases for a number of years, and we found ourselves in a, a real hole we had to get ourselves out of. So we made, we made a tough decision to have these rate increases. Based on the information you had then, we figured we're going, it was going to take us till 2015, 2016, to get us back up to the-
Actually, the, yeah, it was supposed, it was scheduled so by about 2019, we'd be close to the level.
Right, okay. So if we, if we look back then to the numbers we have today, and we said, "We probably don't need that increase in 2012." So none of your charts say, give me the, give me the image that if we just suspend it, not eliminate it, not decrease it, just suspend it, and who knows what's going to happen in three years? I mean, this was three years ago that we did this. In three years, we may need that three percent, but we've already agreed to it. So I'm, I'm asking, can we just suspend it indefinitely? Just not decrease it and not increase it in a year? Because I agree, that's sort of foolish. Let's just put it on suspension. And if we need it in three years, do we look back and say, you know, "We had already approved this three percent. We didn't need it, we suspended it, but you know what? Things have changed today."
It, it could be something along the lines of the suspension of the, the street impact fee, where it comes back once a year to say, "Yes, you need it," or "No, you don't need it." I'm comfortable with having, looking at it once a year, because then we could say, and it might even be a better thing to be able to look at it in conjunction with our next budget cycle, to say, "This three percent is needed sometime during that timeframe," and make it, make it part of the recommendation for the budget cycle.
Because, yeah, I'm repeating myself, but if we had known this three years ago, we wouldn't be having this increase coming up in 2012.
And I guess the other side of that is, being, being able to have this discussion of just deferring something that's already been approved, wouldn't have, wouldn't be available to us right now. If we were in another situation where we, where we didn't have that approved in 2009 and we needed it, we'd have to go through a whole nother cycle to do that adjustment.
Yeah, so I'd, I'd like to have us just consider not decreasing for a year and increasing later, just suspend it indefinitely and look at it every year. I mean, do we need it? No. Okay, we'll look at it again next year. Look at it next year, and if we need it, say, "You know what?" Look at it next year and we need it, say, you know what? Things have changed. The, that 500 years of natural gas supply that we thought we had was just a big air bubble and we don't have that anymore. I mean, it's not going to happen, but...
Mary Lynn, I'm sorry, I must have been confused. My apologies, Councilmember Martner. Mr. Wilkie, you were saying by deferring it, that's what you prefer, so we discuss it every year. But Councilmember Lingle, you're saying to suspend it, which is different than what staff is recommending, correct?
I think it's the same. I mean, in my mind, it's the same. Just deferring it, that's saying we're deferring it for a year. I'm saying, let's just suspend it for a year and review it on an annual basis. Probably the same word game that we're playing, defer a year, for a year, suspend it indefinitely, review it everything, every year is what I'm looking at doing.
Is there, is there any issue with you for that?
I think the mechanics of it would be, whether we say deferral or suspension, I think the mechanics of looking at it down the line would probably be the same. I think my only question would be, is there some point in time when a schedule that is part of a rate resolution, does it become null and void at some point in time? We have to start over?
No. See, Councilmember Costa, my, when I look at a deferral, that's saying, we fully intend on some, at some point, implementing that. And at this point, the way the cost is, our costs are and our rates, it doesn't look like we'll need to anything time in the future. So I'm saying, why defer? Why defer it for a year, two years? Let's just suspend it when we, if we need it, then we can utilize it. That's my, that's my definition difference between a deferral and a suspension.
Okay, let me get a couple of numbers here, and then we'll come to you, Councilmember Martner. We were minus 3 million and we are now plus 4.5. So therefore, we picked up 7.5 million in two years or in three years? I'm, I'm a little confused about that.
Two.
In two. So we picked up 3, 300, 3.75 million per year average. And the original plan from 2010 to 2019 was a nine-year or a 10-year effort. I'm confused about that, too.
The, the model was just out through June 30th, 2019.
Okay, so would I, would I view that as a 10-year number or a nine-year number when I'm doing my math?
See, October 2009 through June 30th, 2019, I would think that would be...
Nine.
Ten, ten full years.
No, ten months.
Ten full years, yeah.
Okay, and our goal there was to go from 3 million in the hole to 8 million to the good, correct?
About 10 million to the good.
10 million to the good.
The projected reserve level at 2019 is around $11 million.
Okay, so that would be, that we would need to improve by 1.3 million dollars a year to accomplish that. 10 years into 13 million, am I okay so far?
I think so.
Okay, so basically, at the rate we're going, we're in, in one, in two years, we've accomplished what we thought it would take six to do. Am I, am I close on that? 1.3 versus 3.75?
Yeah, we are slightly ahead of the projection from three years ago, yes.
Okay. So we're, we're basically doing this in two-thirds less time, in a general sense. A little less, little, not quite two-thirds less time.
Assuming all the costs...
Trends continue.
Yes.
Yes, absolutely. And they can go either way. Okay, Councilmember Martner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I think that's a good point to remind ourselves, the volatility in, in the power price. It is very volatile. And, you know, it will continue to be that way. So, talking about Councilmember Lingle's proposal to suspend it, I think it's a good idea since there was a, you know, a plan put forward that we reluctantly voted for it because we saw that that was the only way to get out of the hole that we were in, that, you know, had this, this program rate increases, right? Now, here we are, we're ahead of the curve. We're certainly ahead of the curve. So I think it would be wise to say, okay, let's suspend the program for a while and let's keep it the way it is until we have to adopt it again. Okay? Now, we, when we, and we, I'm sure we're going to have to adopt it again. I don't know if it's going to be next year or two years from now or whatever, and it might even be different. It might not be 1%, it might not be 3%, it might be some other number.
Yeah, that's the problem with...
So, so going to the deferral then is, you know, deferant implies that we're going to revert back to the program that we had in place. Well, we don't, we don't necessarily want to go back to the program that we have in place. We want to suspend the program that we have in place because right now, it appears to be that we are ahead of it. Then we'll review and start a new program, whatever that new program may be. And I'm sure you're going to come up with some modeling, and, you know, one needs to be increased, but by year 20, you know, it's not going to be 2019. It's going to be some other year ahead because we're going to be two years down the road and et cetera. And then we just look at a new program that will be realistic for the new need. So I tend to agree with suspending it as opposed to deferring it. I certainly do not agree with, you know, decreasing 3% now and increasing next year another 3%. I mean, that's just playing with the public, I think, you know? So at this point in time, I am in strong favor of suspending it unless the public or other council members convince me otherwise.
Okay, let's take a, no, I'm sorry. Go ahead and we'll get you and then we'll go for public comment, just in case there's somebody...
I'd like to just extend the meeting.
Okay, go ahead, make a motion.
I'd move that we extend the meeting an hour.
And a second.
Second.
An hour. All in favor or opposed?
Seven hours.
And that passes? Okay, now we'll go to public comment. Who wants to talk about this? Boy.
Your discussion, I think back when the deregulation of the electric industry was coming and the scramble that everybody was doing to both private and municipal to improve their position, figuring that everybody's going to cut the rates and they're going to have to really be, you know, tough to sell electricity. And we increased the rates on the citizens' Lompoc with the understanding of paying down our stranded costs, which are monies that we owed NCPA for projects that we were involved in and stuff, so that when the deregulation for municipalities or municipally-owned utilities, that we could be competitive. And that was supposed to result in a rate reduction down the road once these stranded costs were paid off. Well, the reality was that electricity costs kept going up, so the city used the increased money not to buy down the stranded costs as we wanted, but kept the cost of electricity the same. Well, now a period of time has gone by and the long-predicted rate changes or lesser rates are now coming. And, you know, maybe it's time to pay back the public or give us a little credit back. I was always cautioned when I was on the council that enterprise funds are just there to meet the costs. They're not money-making or generating pigeonholes that when the water bill comes in and putting a water pigeonhole, that's to cover the cost of the water department, not to store money or buy into the future. So it sounds to me like you've accumulated quite a bit of money in, in a couple of years. What's this fund going to be another year or two years from now? Maybe it's time to give us back a little. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Going? Going? Gone. Okay, come on, Brad. Back, Brad. Let me try a couple of numbers and see if I've got this. So right now, we're 4.5 million to the good, right? And over the last couple of years, we've gained 3.75 million on, on average. Because we were, we were minus three and we're plus 4.5, and that's a 7.5 change. Therefore, that's three and three-quarters in, per year.
Yeah, and a little bit of that, about a million dollars of that was just from one-time money coming back from our investment in the Lodi Energy Center. We had to pay upfront some of the development costs and we got that back. So about a million dollars of that is from that repayment. So, so that was really kind of a one-time...
Okay.
We spent it a while ago.
Are there any other one-time things in here so I can go back and redo my math again?
I think that's the main one.
Okay.
I can't think of others.
Who else has a question while I rework my math?
Just to get back to Councilmember Martner's question about the 750 kilowatt-hours that is used as the average. When I first got here, I talked with NCPA and got them to change that methodology for the city Lompoc because we have such a larger, such a different atmosphere. We have a different, we're not like Lodi, we're not like Redding, where they have huge summertime loads. So in the, the second rate comparison that was here, they're actually comparing 550 kilowatt-hours for the city, for us, comparing 750 for the other utilities. 550 is still slightly on the high side of what the average is for a normal residential customer, but I was able to get them to lower that to make it more realistic for what our customer would be seeing. So that is a change between 2010 and 2012.
Okay, let's try the math. So we're four and a half to the good. And if we took out that million, that was a one-time gain, that would mean that we, we came positive about 3.25 million per year excluding the 1 million instead of 3.75. So at the end of the next fiscal year, we would be about 7.75 to the good. And this is without the, the current increase. And at the end of another nine months, which would be another 2.25, we'd be $10 million to the good. So basically, a year and nine months from now, we would be at our $10 million reserve if...
That's about right because then I have a supplemental package that I made up for myself. And I show sometime between June 30th, 2013 and June 30th, 2014, that will go from 8 million to about 11 and a half million. So roughly in probably December of 2013, we'll probably get to the $10 million level.
Okay, and I'm sorry, was it 10 or 11 that we were trying to get to?
Well, the reserve requirement has a cost-of-living increase factor in it, so it slowly grows over time. So at June 30th, 2019, it's going to be roughly 11.4 million. But right now, it's probably closer to 10.7 or 8.
So 11 is a good number. Okay, so that means that basically somewhere at the end of the second year, so two years from now, we will be at our reserve target that we originally were looking for in 2019. So we'll basically be there six years early.
Yeah.
Okay. So the reason that I started down this path was that little bit of discussion that was in the city administrators' report back when. And what, what brought it into sharper focus was discussions with some nice, older people who were talking about how difficult it was to make ends meet because their social security wasn't going up and things were more difficult. And then what really pulled it into focus was when I spent a great deal of time with an economic development prospect. And at the end of the day, with giving them the very best rate that we had, the difference between us and PG&E was $1,000 a year on a $12,000 a month bill? No, was it eight? You remember? It was a big number.
I don't remember.
It was a big number anyway. It wasn't, it wasn't Joe buying a little electricity. And one of the very first conversations with any of these folks that I talked to about coming to Lompoc is, what do you have for incentives? And what are your utility rates? And where am I going to save some money? And so today, my answer is, well, you're really not. We're going to be on par. If you need a new transformer, that's going to cost you 20 to 30,000 dollars, and we don't have an offset program unless we happen to have a used one in stock, which in the case of this particular company, we did. And that was kind of the saver because it was going to be 32,000 for a transformer and we had one that had been used and was written down to 10. Because PG&E has a program for a user that offsets a substantial portion of the cost of a transformer. And their cost from PG&E over the term of their use was going to be like five grand and I was going to be, I think we ended up closer to 17, which was way better than 35 or 40. So I think for several reasons, we need to not only not have this increase, but we need to reduce by some amount. And the staff has a number for 3%. Frankly, I think 6% is more realistic, which will stretch this reserve gaining process out a couple more years. It'd get us out around 2017, which is still two years before 2019. And I believe we need to do it on a year-by-year basis, as Councilmember Lingle had suggested. And if the world turns around, then we'll undo it. To Councilmember Martner's point, would go up and down? Yep, utility rates go up and down. But this would have an immediate savings on people on a fixed income who are struggling and it would be the, one of the few incentives we would be able to have for economic development. And economic development is our number-one goal. So those are my thoughts on that. Because I think we can probably, I don't think we have to have this done by 2015. I think we can spread it out a little. It went in the hole over a great number of years. It can come back out over a couple more. Councilmember Lingle.
Mr. Mayor, what you're suggesting is we, we actually reduce July 1st by 3% and 3 to 6%, okay? And we then hold the July 1st increase in suspension that in case we need it three, four, or five years down the road, we...
And realize that whatever we do, whether it's three or six, that's a one-year decision and next year, it comes back and we look at it again. These are temporary suspensions pending the future. You know, I've, I've done a great deal of reading about natural gas and depending on who you believe, there's somewhere between a 200 and a 500-year supply proven, and they think there's a lot more. Well, you know, I, Councilmember Martner, I'm surely not an expert on it, but I've had a lot of discussion with a lot of people and everyone has a 200-year number as a minimum. So, Councilmember Lingle, I'm sorry I interrupted.
So, Mr. Wilkie, not that I don't believe the mayor's figures, the difference between a 3% reduction July 1st and a 6% reduction July 1st, when does it take us out to meet our goal of 10 million, 11 million, whatever you're looking at?
I didn't model that, so I would have to take a look at the pro forma and plug that 6% number in, along with a 6% correction at the following year to see what it would come up to be. I can do that. It wouldn't take me very long to put that in there to see where we, where we get to.
You say it wouldn't take very long. I mean, tonight or next week?
Yeah. I have the programs open in my computer right now.
Okay, I think, in my opinion, I'd like to see those numbers before I agree to a 3% or a 6%. I, I agree with the mayor that, and Mr. Skyler, is he still here? Yeah, if we, we're not supposed to be, we shouldn't be making money on our utilities. We should cover our costs. That's what we did in 2009 when we did the increases, so we could cover our costs. But if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to see Mr. Wilkie's figures before we, before I proceed with it, anyway.
Okay, how about if we put this aside for... Okay, how about if we put this aside for a few minutes, and he can go work on that, and we'll take up item nine in the meantime?
If I can just give you one other piece of information?
Sure.
Part of the policy reserve is, one component is a rate stabilization fund, which is probably a third of the number that's the total 11.5, or what would be 11.5 later on. That rate stabilization component is there to allow for ups and downs in market costs and other costs, and revenue changes, consumption changes. So that's actually a very important component of the rate stabilization reserve is a very important component because it allows the utility to have some flexibility in saying, we don't need to have a 2.75% increase next year. We'll just have that ride as part of the rate stabilization fund, and hopefully the following year, it will even itself out. Until we get to the point where that rate stabilization reserve is fully funded, we don't have that flexibility, even though we're getting to the point where we have positive reserves. So yes, it is a cost-based utility, but part of that cost-based utility is having some reserves that allow us to have a rate, a stable rate that can fluctuate over time through the reserves rather than fluctuating over time customer rates. So...
Okay, do we want to let him, do you want to ask more questions, or you want to let him go get a number for us?
I'd just, real quick, would wonder if it wouldn't be a better thought to go ahead and look at just bringing our commercial rates more in line and leaving the residential, you know, where we have the economic driver now of offering the commercial rate, so to speak, where we're exceptionally high in Lompoc, I feel, and the commercial properties pay considerably more than the residential. So if we were able to balance that, I think that if you wanted to put business in here, that would be the stimulus to use. And so I'm thinking that if we were going to give a break on something, do it through the commercial and leave our residential right now at, you know, just no increase.
Okay. Sorry, Councilmember Martner?
I was thinking of bringing that up because I think it has been discussed many times that if we can provide incentive to businesses, and it has been discussed, and to this day, we have never come up with a plan that we have an incentive electric rate for businesses. And for some reason, that just doesn't come up. But I do believe with, I do agree with Councilmember Starbuck that maybe in the modeling, I mean, that you're doing, don't just look at the residential. You know, you have to, you have to play with the numbers in the commercial if you can, and play with rate increases in there, right?
Unfortunately, the pro forma model I have is based on total consumption. It's not based on class, so...
So then, and I, and I was thinking, because my next question was, okay, so you're doing a total. You're doing just all the consumption?
Exactly.
And then probably the commercial is just a small percentage, and the residential is the overriding. Is that correct or no?
It's actually...
Or is it...
Large commercial, which are demand customers, regular commercial customers and residential, they're roughly one-third each of our total consumption. So even though there's 7,000 residential customers, the total load for that residential customer compared to the overall load is probably in the 30% to 40% range rather than 60 or 70. So we have a fairly large component of our revenue structure there.
So then if you were to consider lowering the industrial and the commercial by a large amount, you will impact, how do you, you know, in your model, you will impact, when are you going to get back to the reserve level that you want?
Yeah, and the model I have wouldn't allow me to do that quickly. In fact, we would probably have to go back to doing a cost-of-service study to see, the last cost-of-service study we did was in 2008, and it did show that the cost of service for commercials is actually less than it is for residential, even though our cost structure, our rate structure commercials are higher than residential.
Also, I just want to clarify, we do have an economic development electric rate for businesses that do have a certain usage level, if you want to expand on that, Brad.
Let me throw that in, and that, the one I was talking to you about, we threw in that and everything else, and we still were just that much cheaper. $1,000 over the course of a year was the only difference.
So it's becoming painfully obvious that there isn't really that much advantage, even if we have an economic development, you know, decrease rates by 5% in the first year and whatever, 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 right?
It only affects businesses that are at a certain usage, so, you know, we, we are not competitive in other areas of commercial. Or we aren't less, I should say.
Okay, thank you.
And you want to go do it?
Well, I have a suggestion. I mean, it is getting kind of late. I think we all, I believe we all agree that a suspension of the 3% rate increase July 1st is probably acceptable. What we don't know the answer to is whether we want to reduce rates by 3%, 6%, commercial, industrial, residential. So what if we agree, what if one of us makes a motion to suspend the July 1st 3% increase indefinitely and ask Mr. Wilkie to come back to us at a future meeting with a recommendation on a decrease of 3%, 6%, whatever, for commercial and/or industrial?
If that, if that return could come back at the next meeting, I would be happy with that.
I don't think that that needs to be limited. I think that residential could be included as well. It's something that can be considered to be decreased if, you know...
A decrease would be...
Yep.
I'm fine with that.
Councilmember Lingle, why don't you make a motion?
Okay, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, it's really simple. You could do it by tonight, but I get the point. We'll move on. Go ahead, Councilmember Lingle.
I move that we suspend the implementation of the July 1st, 2012 electrical rate increase indefinitely and ask our, Mr. Wilkie to come back to us as soon as possible with a suggestion on reducing commercial, or reducing electrical rates by a certain amount.
I would second that motion, but I would not say suggest. I would say that Mr. Wilkie comes back with results from the model of what would be the impact of reduction rates, and how would that affect?
I agree.
At our next meeting.
Is there a parameter about when we should reach our reserve policy levels in that analysis?
Not when, but what you would be showing is not when we would like it to be there, but when it actually would get there, depending on what actions we took. And then we could say, you know, we'd probably make the policy decision at that point, what year we're comfortable with is what it's going to come down to. Does that make sense?
You're not forcing the model to be good at 2019. You're going to work with the rates, a 3% reduction, 6% reduction, no reduction, this reduction in commercial versus that reduction in industrial versus that reduction in residential, and show all the curves. And it would be obvious that perhaps one of them is at 2050 and the other one is at whatever, right? The point is, is just to see the trends with all, you know, with all the options.
Yeah.
Okay, so how about if we just narrow this a little bit, so he doesn't have 100 choices, which would be 0, 3, and 6 to all classes, and 0, 3, and 6 to commercial classes? How about that? That would make a reasonable set of numbers that could be developed.
To commercial classes only.
To commercial classes only. And we just come back with those numbers? Okay, maker of the motion, is all of that good with you?
Yes.
Okay. Second of the motion, is all of that good with you? All right, and...
Mr. Mayor and Council, I just want to verify that Mr. Wilkie will be able to complete that report for next meeting.
That was going to be next. That's good for the model, isn't it?
I would have to...
66, 66, well, based, and I don't think we're looking for the absolute last word, but you're just going to apply the factors that you know exist.
You know, I'm going to have to make some changes, the pro forma that was provided to us by the consultant, so I'm going to have to go through that process before I even start. And the other thing that City Clerk just mentioned is that the staff reports would have been due to Joe, yes, two weeks ago, to get to the July 3 meeting.
Ah, good point. Okay, so that makes it the July, whatever the other one is?
The 17th.
17th.
And July 17th is hopefully the same night that we're going to be doing our presentation for the water and wastewater rates that I also have to prepare for.
Good timing. We'll have lots of rates. Any other discussion on that? Clear enough on what the motion is? Staff, clear enough? Okay. And any further discussion? Can we vote, please? That passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Lynn? As it is getting to this late hour, and the question of transparency has come up quite often, especially in regards to RDA, I'd be curious to know if we could table Agenda Item 11 and 12 to coincide with the meeting where the city administrator will give an update on RDA, as was requested at the previous meeting? See the status update on that as well, and then we could have these two agenda items on that same evening.
These, Item 11 and 12, just to talk about it, are really, those are, they're not actually actions. All we're doing is affirming what the Oversight Board has already approved. So it's not that we're going to make a policy decision. We're simply affirming what has been approved by the Oversight Board.
Understood, but any action taken after midnight is somewhat questionable? That's my only argument.
I agree with Councilmember Costa. We've been criticized heavily of making important decisions when 90% of the Lompoc residents are sleeping. So I would prefer that we conduct our meetings while we still have some audience presence.
Okay, well, when I asked earlier if there was anyone that was interested in those items, when the whole crowd was here, no hands were raised, so I would conclude there wasn't a lot of interest.
Well, that was a request, so I guess I need a second and a third for that. Is that right? City Attorney?
I need to, need to ask the city attorney a question before we go down this road, please.
If, if the, we need to have a motion that would continue those two matters.
Okay, now, just hold on. I know what you guys want to do, but I need to ask a question. So with regard to the Oversight Board and the timeframe of this decision, is this a time-critical matter because we are getting ready to roll over into July, and this is a budget that begins July 1st? And therefore, if we don't have a budget, I don't think we're able to make payments? Is my recollection from prior discussions, I could be incorrect?
I think I need to ask the Finance Director or Economic Development Director, don't we have a budget for the first part, the July, and this is to the July to December, and we have, this is for the rest of the year?
To me, there's a difference between the ROPS that was approved by Oversight Board, which is a six-month period, and our own appropriations that we have to have in our books to, for our operations. To me, that's why I brought these two to the council and to the successor agency because they're related, but they're two, to me, they're two different steps, just like the city budget is adopted, even though we have some appropriations that are provided to us elsewhere.
So the answer to the mayor's question is yes?
Yeah. However, two years ago, we deferred the RDA adoption of the budget at the same time that we deferred the city adoption until July. But we had, I think we had some sort of continuing resolution for the interim period. It'd be, I don't see either one of these as controversial because they're just enacting something that's already been approved by the successor agency and the Oversight Board and the Department of Finance. So to me, they're almost ministerial in nature.
So these are basically the duplicates of what we previously approved in a different format to meet a legal requirement? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
So we can post the preparations to our books, yeah.
Okay. That's kind of the problem. And...
If I understand correctly, you said that it's somewhat inconsequential as far as whether it's done tonight or later?
As long as later is before July 1st, yeah.
Okay, so that means that it would have to be done. No, that's it, okay?
And there's the alternative of coming back next Tuesday? I think because we've, we've done all these things before, that this is not anything new, we're just going forward, that this is something we could just go forward with. Okay, come on down, Dinah.
Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. The title of my report is "The Consideration of the Renewal of Cooperation Agreements with the County of Santa Barbara for Participation in the Community Development Block Grant, Urban County Partnership, and the County of Santa Barbara Home Consortium for Program Years 2013 to 2015." In the interest of time and the fact that the report is rather lengthy, I would like to know if you would like me to go through the report, or if I should just wait for questions.
I think maybe you could summarize it for us, the two pros and cons, perhaps you're infinitely familiar with it.
Okay. Well, I'll just read the recommendation. It is recommended that City Council provide direction to staff regarding the city's continued participation in the CDBG Urban County Partnership Program for 2013-15, and provide direction to staff regarding the city's continued participation in the Santa Barbara Home, County Home Consortium for Program Years 2013-15. And essentially, we are at a point where the two cooperation agreements for the urban county and the home consortium are both up for renewal. And HUD regs require that both the city and county begin to go through a renewal process a year before the start of the new program year. So that's why we're doing that process now. We still have one more year in the urban county program. So again, we're doing this a year early, but that's the requirement that HUD has for us. So this is an opportunity for the city to consider that renewal again. Again, in my staff report, I talk about how we got into the urban county consortium, what the initial monetary incentives were. We've been in the urban county now for six years. It'll be six years at the conclusion of this three-year cycle. And those cooperation agreements are for three years. So once you make a decision, it's three years. You can't leave the cooperation agreement until the end of that cycle, but there's always that option. In terms of the pros and cons, I did identify some of those, and as a matter of fact, I brought some of the books in case you were interested in looking at what a consolidated plan looks like. But that's, you know, the, probably one of the main benefits of being in an urban consortium is the fact that it does save in terms of the administrative requirements that the city has to provide to HUD. HUD is a very administratively-heavy federal agency. They do require these five-year con plans. They're almost like general plans. There's also the action plan. There's a number of public participation requirements. There are a number of reports in terms of semi-annual labor standard reports. There's analysis of impediments to fair housing. So those are the kinds of things that the county is currently providing for the city. They provide those required documents in order for not only the county, but the city and all the participating jurisdictions to continue to receive this federal entitlement I think the other advantage is the fact that... I think the other advantage is the fact that prior to the city's involvement with the county, the city was an entitlement city. We received our entitlement grant directly from HUD. Over the past, literally over the past eight years, at least since I've been working the program, the CDBG grant has gradually gone down. We don't expect that trend to change. The best outcome would be the federal grant perhaps remain the same. So regardless of whether the city becomes an entitlement community again, or remains in the consortium, more than likely, whatever choice the city makes in that, it won't really change the grant. Let's see, what other?
Can you characterize how much it went from into an eight-year period in a general sense?
One of the attachments is Attachment Number Two, where I look at the federal grant allocations over, essentially over an eight-year period. So I look at, you know, what the city was receiving in 2005, 2006, and so forth. So essentially, when the city was an entitlement jurisdiction, we were at $583,460. In 2012, the city will be receiving a little under half, $388,304. So even this coming year's grant is fifteen percent less than last year's grant. So it's been steadily declining over the years, just to give you an idea. I think the other advantage to the urban consortium, quite frankly, is the fact that the, now that the county is getting a CDBG grant, the city can participate in that funding as well. And in fact, the city has benefited from those county funds, and I identified a number of projects in my staff report, which is county CDBG money that has gone toward Lompoc projects. One of the projects I actually omitted, as I was preparing for this, is that the, not only did the Lompoc Veterans Memorial Building receive funding this year for elevator repair, or actually elevator installation, but also the Lompoc Veterans Memorial Building received $309,545 in county CDBG funds for the rehabilitation of that historic building. So those are funds that were not in the county before, but for the city's participation in the urban consortium. In terms of the cons, we do have to work with the county. And, you know, one of the points I bring out in the staff report is that budget changes that occur here have to go through the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors is not, they're not necessarily approving or disapproving of how Lompoc wants to use its money, it's simply an administrative process that before we submit something to HUD, it's gotta at least go through the board and get approved and sent on. So that's a con. I provide for council the option of also renewing or not renewing the home consortium. And again, I gave a history of that and Lompoc's participation in the home consortium. The city can opt to not participate and compete to the state, or compete with, at the state level for those funds on a competitive basis. By participating in the home consortium, we get an annual regular grant that can be used toward any type of affordable housing program. If you'd like, I can go on. I do talk about the fiscal impact. If the city decides to become an entitlement community, there will be essentially a reapplication process, and that will be developing that five-year consolidated plan and the Action Plan. You know, they're lengthy, significant documents, they can be done, so that's certainly an option the city can take in doing that. And then the city then becomes, would reapply to HUD, and my understanding, I did speak with HUD about this, and the city can become an entitlement community again. So that is, you know, that is definitely a choice. What we cannot guarantee at this point is what that entitlement grant would be.
And if, if we hired the immortal consultant to write that set of documents, what would that cost be, in a general sense?
According to one consultant that I talked with, she gave me a ballpark figure of about $30,000 to do the consolidated plan, and potentially another $5,000 to do the Action Plan. So those are ballpark figures. I do know that the requirements for the consolidated plan and the Action Plan are changing, and I don't know if that's gonna make them easier or more difficult to prepare. HUD is looking to put more and more of this information online, so it will be basically doing it kind of on an internet basis, probably putting everything electronic, in other words, making more of this electronically submitted.
Councilmember Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, the bottom line is, would the city have received more monies if it was on its own, or if it stayed with the county?
At this point, I do not believe the city would receive more money.
Would, does the county decide how the monies are allocated within the consortium? Meaning, does the county might opt to send monies that could have gone to Lompoc to some other city? Or are they fixed?
They are fixed formulas, based on HUD criteria, which includes factors such as poverty level, overcrowding, substandard housing. And currently, Lompoc receives about twenty-five percent of all the urban county money that is received under the CDBG consortium. Under the home consortium, Lompoc receives approximately twelve to fourteen percent of the total home allocation to the county. And again, those are based on population numbers, poverty numbers, basically demographic numbers, and those percentages don't change year to year. So whatever the county's receiving that year, we get that fixed percentage based on our demographic statistics.
So you're basically saying that the county can really not play with this money, let's say politically? And the advantage is that we'll get all of this administrative staff type of work out of the county, whereas we would have to do it ourselves?
That's correct.
And you're also saying that if we go on our own, it's not clear how much money we would get?
No.
I'm sorry, you done?
Okay, I guess you are certain of these statements?
I am certain that we are uncertain of how much money we'll be getting next year. The trend is that we will be getting less. The multi-year trend is that the funds is going down.
But we would also get less, whether we were with the county or on our own.
That's correct.
You know, everybody's gonna get less.
That's correct.
So that's, I'm just trying to, of course, you know, what the bottom line here is, we're gonna try to get as much money as we can for our city. So can we do, are we better off doing this under the county's umbrella, or are we better off doing this on our own? And I'm trying to understand, based on the information given here, which one is the best one? And I'll have to believe what you're telling me, as far as the advantages and the disadvantages. I don't have any other way to make this decision. So, you know, it's bearing on you to basically say, yes, clearly the county is the way to go, because what you just said. You're not giving any other options, really, from that point of view. There is no other options.
Attachment Three is a table of the pros and cons. And I tried to be very objective in that analysis, because I know there are some opinions that the city may not be doing as well under the county, and that's why I provided that multi-year review of what the city has received while we were in the consortium and when we were on our own, as in terms of an entitlement community.
Where are those opinions coming from?
I'm sorry?
Where are those opinions coming from? What are the arguments? I mean, I haven't heard them, but...
I think the, I think the perception is what you were saying earlier, which is that somehow Lompoc is not getting its full grant under the county. That the county has taken a percentage of Lompoc's grant. I think there may be that perception, and I wanted to at least clarify that that was not the case.
No, according to what you just said, they're fixed formulas, and you can't really, you know, change the demographics and the numbers and that kind of thing. So it seems that it would be very, you know, straightforward, what the allocation is.
That's correct.
Okay.
Let me get one in Bob. In the past, there was some money that shelters were able to receive when we stood alone, because they could apply to HUD for shelter funds, and after we joined the county consortium, they were no longer able to apply, so they suffered a reduction in funding. Could you, could you, and obviously, that was LHCDC, and they're gone, but the same thing would be true of Good Samaritan today. Could you, could you speak to that issue, please?
Yes. When Lompoc was an entitlement community, of course, at that time, the county did not receive emergency shelter grant funds. So those funds were not in the county. So the only way that our agencies could receive that particular source of funding was to apply to the state, and that was a competitive grant. And Lompoc was well-positioned to receive those funds, because of our demographics. When the city joined the urban county, you cannot double-dip, essentially. So if the county is receiving those same emergency shelter grant funds, once the city joined the consortium, agencies in the city could not also apply to the state for those funds. So in that case, that particular agency was no longer able to receive those funds from the state. That agency could, and I believe did, apply to the county for those ESG funds. But the pool of applicants for those ESG funds also increased. So the county then had more potential emergency shelter grant providers to allocate those funds to. And the agencies had to be competitive, one with the other. In other words, they had to show that they were providing a competitive program, and that was a decision made by the, by the committee that reviewed those applications.
So there was the one opportunity where the money could be reallocated, because I, and you can, if I'm wrong, it seems to me there was about a $90,000 difference between what was being received when they applied independently versus what was received after it went through the county consortium. That seem right to you?
I believe, I believe if it's the same grant, I believe they were receiving, I think it was about $60,000 from the state for the two shelters. And the total ESG funds to the county now are about $85,000.
For the whole county?
I'm sorry?
For the whole county?
Yes.
Okay, now, let me, let me give Bob a chance, because I cut him off at the pass.
Actually, it's okay, because most of my questions have been answered, but I realize you don't have a crystal ball, and you really can't tell us exactly what we'll be getting if we administer the funds, or if the county does, but you've indicated that they probably would be similar. But you probably can tell us whether you'd need to increase staff or not if we decided to depart from the county.
Well, that's a good question. I don't think you need to, I don't think you need to increase staff. At the same, at the same token, you would only be able to hire the staff that the grant could pay for. The grant has very specific caps on what can be used for administrative allowance. So whether that grant is $500,000 or $200,000, it's still twenty percent for the administration of the grant. I don't believe you would need more staff to administer the entitlement grant if the city was an entitlement community. Our staffing ratio, our staffing levels haven't changed.
Okay.
I think, if anything, it's probably decreased.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Martin.
Going back to the question of funds for the homeless shelters, so I see now where the opinions may have been generated regarding the fact that, once we joined the county, we were not eligible to apply for funds through the state, and that was perceived as a bad move, right? Okay, so moving forward, we would be in the same situation. The agencies that are providing homeless shelters in this city will not be able to apply for monies to the state. They would only have to rely on county funds. You mentioned that the county funds are $80,000 for the whole county, and you also mentioned that the city would be in good standings with the state, or would be somewhat competitive with the state regarding homeless shelters because of our demographics. So, and if we apply for the state, the pool of monies there is larger, I assume, than $80,000, correct?
It would be competitive, so that agency would have to compete to the state. There's no guaranteeing how much they would receive through a competitive allocation. One, one thing I would like to point out, though, is that there are now fewer agencies competing for those ESG funds.
Right. And, and I believe that Lompoc is competitive because of the demographics, unfortunately, but true. It's probably very competitive. So, so it brings an interesting point, because we just went through the homeless shelters issues in this town, and it appears to be that that's really where the biggest problem is here. The CDBG funds, whether they are administered through the county, or whether we do it independently, it's really hard to tell where we would, where we would be better off. But, but it seems that with a homeless shelter, we might be better off going on our own. Am I incorrect?
Well, you could, you could probably draw that conclusion, but again, I go back to the point that there are fewer agencies in Lompoc competing for those funds.
With the state, you mean?
In Lompoc. In other words, the agency that was applying for those state funds doesn't exist anymore, or is at least not managing those shelters. So our community now has an economy of scale, so you have a larger organization that can administer not only a shelter in Lompoc, but a shelter in Santa Maria.
So you're talking about Good Samaritan, basically?
That's correct.
To be in a larger organization, meaning what, it has more clout in the state?
No, no, they may have more capacity.
Okay.
So now, the funds that are being leveraged by the county, they're able to use more efficiently, because now you don't have two sets of administrative staffs, two financial officers, two sets of administrative organizations. So in other words, you have an economy now, an economy of scale, and now Good Samaritan can leverage those funds. And in fact, Good Samaritan has leveraged those funds, because they were very competitive in receiving a state EHAP grant, and that was one of the grants they were able to use, I believe, to develop a new shelter program, a transitional program to their recovery way home. So again, when you have fewer agencies, those monies can go farther, instead of a lot of folks. Thank you.
Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I just wanted to confirm that although there's a set manner of doing, of getting the money from the county to the city, there is no set way of allocating the funds from the state to a particular city, if we were to branch out on our own? There's no way of knowing?
That's correct. There's no formula. It's competitive. So although Lompoc would certainly be well-positioned to compete at the state level, we would also be competing with other smaller cities that are, again, same population, same demographics.
And the risk that we're taking in the meantime is spending $35,000 to apply and potentially get the same amount we would through the county, or even less.
Yes, the $35,000 would be to become an entitlement community again?
But that's, that's the risk that we're really talking about here. If it didn't cost anything to branch off, then it would be more likely for us to say, you know, let's give it a try, but we're talking about $35,000 that we would need to spend to do this, to risk not even getting the same amount, potentially less. However, the one thing I wanted to bring up, as I noticed in the pros and cons, it says, as lead agency, the county is directly responsible to HUD. responsible to HUD regarding home compliance issues." Can you speak to that?
Well, as, as the lead agency under the home consortium, they are the direct recipient of those home funds. So they are responsible to HUD for the administration of those funds. They do pass on some of those administrative and monitoring responsibilities to the city through, again, that home consortium agreement. But ultimately, they are responsible to HUD.
And I was wondering if there was ever monies allocated, I'm sorry, my brain's a little fried right now, through this program to LHCDC, because that's what I was, I know that that's not on topic, but the reason I ask that is, and then this would be information that I didn't previously have, which is that they were directly responsible and not the city in regards to compliance issues?
Well, I'm not sure I know, I heard the question, but that is between the city and the county. So in other words, the level of responsibility that the city has under the home program, that's negotiated between the city and county.
And so as it stands now, it's under the city's responsibility?
Potentially. I think HUD will go to the county first.
But is there a contract between the county and the city that says we are directly responsible regarding compliance issues?
Yes, we do have a contract with the county for that.
Okay. But is, okay.
But I think the point there is the issue of willful non-compliance. In other words, whether the city willfully decides they're not going to administer the home program consistent with HUD regulations. Then at that point, the city's out of compliance with the county and with HUD. It's sort of more of a, you know, we are going to do our own thing type of action.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Let's take a minute and go to oral communications. Anybody out there want to talk about this?
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Nicholas Gonzalez, resident. As I reviewed this information, I had some of the very same concerns. The first being that the monitoring was relinquished to the county. And so the monies are used here, but the county monitors how they're used here. Secondly, was the item with, with the shelters and being able to apply directly. I'm not trying to question, because I don't have that exact recollection at this time, but I thought the amount was closer to what you said, Mary Lynn, about $90,000 that was lost at the creation of the consortium in '07, '08. But I guess ultimately, the decision is, you were eligible before, you had it before, and one would believe that, yes, there is somewhat of a gamble, but I sincerely doubt that you're not going to get the same or equivalent amount. And then the local shelters will be able to apply directly again and get that monies that they previously weren't able to get. It's all on a competitive basis. So if you want to relinquish your monitoring, and you want to have the county administer your money, join the consortium, if you want to bring it back home, do it here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay. Come on back, Diana. Let's see if we get any more questions. Okay. Who's got a question?
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Although in public comment, what was stated, to me, makes sense. And actually, when this report was brought to us originally, this was something that I was seriously looking into. I thought that it would make sense for us to go back to entitlement community. But again, I want to go back to not just the $35,000, but additional staff time. Is that right? So monitor, so I mean, that's really what it's coming down to. Additional staff time, $35,000 in the monitoring. It sounds like it's already all on us, anyway. So that really wouldn't change very much with compliance issues. That's, so really, we're talking about more staff time, $35,000, and the potential of then being able to dictate, not having county oversight directly, and potentially getting more or less funds.
Certainly, there would be more responsibility on staff. You know, I worked at the city when we were an entitlement community. The workload is, it's really about the same, quite honestly. I think the real push is in the development of the consolidated plan. That particular project is all-consuming. It takes a massive amount of time, especially if it's done in-house. And that's how it was done last time. A consultant, obviously, would be a lot easier. The problem with the consultant is that the payment of the consultant comes out of your 20% administrative cap. So currently, our administrative cap is about $77,000. So to develop a consolidated plan would take already half of your administrative allowance. And that money is used primarily for staff salaries now. So that's kind of the, that's kind of the choice.
And, you know, I have a question. You know, council approves the CDBG budget and budget revisions that's then forwarded to the county board of supervisors before then they forward it to HUD. How often have they changed what we forwarded to them in the first place as our budget?
They don't change the city's recommendations. The board of supervisors simply authorizes county staff to submit that plan to HUD. The board of supervisors does not review, edit, or change the city's own priorities for the use of those funds.
So really, I mean, I know that historically, there was an incentive for the county to want us to be part of the consortium. Now, there's really no incentive for them to have us be part of the consortium, but it's more of that they will allow it to continue because we were already part of it.
That's correct.
But technically, they don't have to accept us as part of the consortium, correct?
They, they don't, but they want. They want the city involved.
And why is that? So what is the incentive for them?
The incentive for the city would be for the county to receive, for example, a larger percentage of ESG, it's now called Emergency Solutions Grant, because you've got a larger population number that HUD is using to calculate that figure on. You're also looking at a continuum of care program. So you've got Lompoc statistics and the county's numbers for the allocation of continuum of care dollars. When we were receiving stimulus funds, again...
Hold on just a second. I need a motion to continue.
So moved.
For...
An hour.
Second.
Okay. Moving second to continue for an hour. Vote, please.
If you could continue, please.
Sorry about that.
So, and, and we don't know what can happen in terms of other federal programs, other initiatives that could happen in the future, where there would be...
I did, Stacey. I made the motion. Sorry about that. Who was the second?
Starbuck.
Councilmember. Starbuck.
Because what I'm trying to figure out here is, although that may be an incentive that they can receive more funds for these programs or under these grant titles, there's still a certain way that they have to go about giving us the funds. So even though they're getting more, that is meaning that we're going to be getting still our equal share. Is that correct?
It is, except where, in my report, I talk about how the city has directly benefited from receiving county CDBG funds. So, for example, the city has received a portion of CDBG, of its, of the county portion for Lompoc projects. Another example is the animal shelter. The county kicked in about, I don't recall right off, but certainly about $98,000. It was more than what the city kicked in. There are a number of programs. Youth Corps, for example. The county is contributing $50,000 to Youth Corps. Youth Corps has applied to the city of Lompoc for about $24,000.
Right. But the animal shelter and Youth Corps are countywide programs?
They are. But they do benefit Lompoc. So in other words, those county funds leverage and augment what would be provided in Lompoc. I mean, the Lompoc Animal Shelter benefits the Lompoc Valley. It benefits the county, but it's benefiting the city and the Lompoc Valley. So...
So that would be a benefit of staying with the consortium?
Yes.
Right. Thank you.
Councilor Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The responsibility of monitoring right now is falling with the city. Within, it has been negotiated with the county?
It has.
So it is...
It's still, it's still in play.
So, so the responsibility of monitoring is within the city, up to now. And if we decide to enter into this consortium again, that would have to be negotiated.
The county recognized that the, the use of home funds in the city was the county's responsibility to monitor. And that's, that's the monitoring role they took on. In about 2009, 2010, the county clarified its position and said that where city home funds were used and county home funds were not involved, that the city's responsibility was to monitor those properties going forward.
Where there were no county funding.
That's correct.
It was only city funding.
That's correct.
Okay. So, from your experience in the last few years, has, would, if the city were to go on its own, would there be an increase of need of staff for the monitoring purposes?
Yes. It would involve more staff time.
Could that be negotiated?
If the city remained in the home consortium, it could be?
Yes, if it remains, but if it goes on its own, it would have to, have to basically come up with staff for monitoring.
For those properties where there was city home funds only?
Okay. Now, my next question is, from your experience, the places where there has been monitoring, that the ownership has been with the county, have they done a good job?
That's a difficult question to answer.
There is always an answer for a question, and I would like an honest answer.
I think county staff did, did a good job. I believe that county staff did the appropriate monitoring. Could more have been done? Yes.
Thank you.
Councilor Linkl?
Mr. Mayor, if everyone is ready, I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, I think we've, I think we've worked it pretty hard. Go ahead.
Okay. I move that city continue participation in the CGGB Urban County Partnership for program years 2013 through 15, and continue participation in the Santa Barbara County Home Consortium for program years 2013 through 2015.
And a second.
I'll go ahead and second it.
Just one last question. Did anyone from Good Sam chat with you about this? Since they're the only, the one that I think is affected, and they're not here, so I assume they're happy with this. But that can be a dangerous assumption.
I have not spoken with anyone with Good Sam specifically about this staff report, but there are certainly issues later on down the line, particularly with Mark's House, where Good Sam would be interested particularly about maintaining the Mark's House and using federal funds for that, so...
So I guess the question is, are we, if they were standing here, would they be in favor of what we're doing, if you could guesstimate that?
Would Good Samaritan be in favor?
Yeah.
I would think so.
They haven't expressed anything to the contrary, do you?
No. Not Good Samaritan, no.
Okay. Councilor Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will not support the motion, given the history of what we've seen. I also am concerned with the homeless shelters' potential funding through this, through the county. And I think the, the only agency that is involved in this at this time, which is an interim agency, probably would benefit from having participated in this discussion. Unfortunately, they're not here. I would like to really have known their opinion and how they would have been affected by this decision. So having, not having that information, I, you know, I really cannot support moving forward with the consolidation, with the consortium, joining the consortium.
What's the, what's the deadline on this? Just something they need to know tonight, or...
Yeah, we're already past the deadline. It's due tomorrow.
Actually, and I think I do reference it in the staff report, on June 1st, the county did ask for an extension. I don't know whether that extension's been granted. I think what the county is trying to do is certainly poll all the different participating cities in the urban consortium on their renewal. I believe the county has also asked the city of Guadalupe to also join the urban consortium, and that's under consideration. So Lompoc is not the only city considering this. Every other city is weighing this same renewal. And I think because of that, the county will, will probably get the extension. But I believe the final, final deadline is like August 9th, where the county really has to provide all the supporting documentation to HUD.
Because I share the concern over the, over the shelters, and I, you know, I apologize, I should have called Good Sam and asked them, but it just didn't, didn't click with me. Do you think if we kick this can down the road two weeks, that would cause the county some serious problem? So we could, we could poll Good Sam and ask them?
Certainly, if the city wants to take, you know, some additional time to, to consider this issue. One of the things that I did want to bring up is if the city, and certainly you don't have to make a final decision, but if the city is moving toward a renewal, then at the next meeting, hopefully, there would be a renewal agreement that the city could take a look at. So as you can see, we don't have renewal agreements attached, because we really needed to know council's direction. But I believe the county is currently working on an updated agreement. So that could certainly come back to council.
Okay. Let me, let me kind of ask a question down the, down the bar here. From my standpoint, the one thing I'm concerned about is whether or not the shelters would be better off if we were not in the county consortium. Are there any other issues that anyone has concerns with at this moment?
Mr. Mayor, you know, considering the extension, it indicates in the staff report that the city requested it was granted an extension until June 20th of 2012. So our extension expires today.
Edit.
My second concern, besides the potential funding for the homeless shelters, is giving up control over monitoring. And I certainly would feel that joining the consortium and then saying, "Well, we don't have a staff to do the monitoring," and leaving it to the county would be less than a desirable position to be in. I would like to have more local control over all the loans and contracts and projects that are funded through CDBG. I would prefer to keep it within the city.
Okay. Councilor Starbuck?
Yeah. One of the big concerns I have is, all of a sudden, we decide not to renew. Now we're into the last minute, final hour crunch of reapplying to HUD to be on the entitlement list for CDBG. So we're starting at ground zero when we're already past, almost getting ready to go past the deadline on the consortium.
Well, maybe...
Well, I do want to clarify that the deadline has to do more with the county's renewal than the city's application as an entitlement community. If the city wants to reapply as an entitlement community, they simply tell the county, "We're not interested." And then you begin to have a discussion with HUD. So the application for entitlement status is to let HUD know that that's the direction the city's moving in, and then to start the whole application process with developing the consolidated plan. the consolidated plan. So again, there's this one year where we will remain in the consortium, but during that, this coming year, the city would have to go through that application process with, with HUD. So the deadline has to do more with the county needing to know from us, are we in, are we out? So then they can move forward in their application to HUD.
So maybe as an alternative, we could say to the county, "We're interested in walking forward with you, but we need to check this one little detail out while you write up your contract." Would that, would that be a good alternative?
Sure.
Okay, Council, Councilwoman Acosta.
Thank you, Marylyn. In regards to Councilmember Martin's concern, though, of local oversight, wasn't that what was, I was requesting information about earlier, which is that's what was written into the contract between the city and the county, is that we are the party responsible, so therefore, we have the direct oversight responsibility? Is that correct?
Well, under the home consortium, the, the county is responsible for monitoring. Now, the city can certainly add additional language. That's, I mean, that's a negotiable issue between the city and county, if you want to beef up that language so that it's absolutely clear, or a delineation of responsibilities, or, you know, if the city wants more responsibility, the county might be very willing to delegate that to the city.
Yeah, I mean, of course, they would, you know, who wants to assume liability, right? I mean, it would make sense for them to want us to assume that liability.
So that would be certainly something that you would want to include in the agreement and the appropriate language that the council feels comfortable with. Thank you.
Councilmember Lingle.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call a question.
You want to leave the motion stand?
We have a motion in a second, yes.
Okay. Let's take this one. Any other discussion? And if you vote, please. Okey-dokey, moving right along.
Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
That passes three to two.
And welcome. In a new day.
All right.
First, first action in a new day.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor, council members. I'm glad to be here, but I am not glad to be here with this particular item.
Yeah.
So I'll go with the recommendation, is it is recommended the city council review the attached draft letter of comment, make any desired changes, and authorize the mayor to sign, and staff to send the letter to the Central Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board. As background, we are currently under permit with the regional board and the state board as a small municipal storm, separate storm sewer entity, and they are revising the, there's two different things going on, so forgive me, because I'm working on both at the same time. You'll see the next one on the 17th of July. This, this is, that's the state permit, and this is the regional board's microscopic version of their section of the state permit dealing with post-construction development. Post-construction development involves infiltrating a bunch of water on every private site, and the old system of having this idea where your rainfall goes off your property and down the storm drain, and out to the river, and out to the ocean, they want to do away with that. They want to have everybody infiltrate all the water on their properties. So as a condition of development, which starts at 2,500 square feet of new, new or replaced impervious space, which isn't a tiny amount, but it really isn't that much, you would start to have these requirements. If you get up to 15,000 square feet of new impervious or replaced impervious space, you have a huge requirement under these Region III requirements of infiltrating, basically in our community, it would be like an inch, 1.7 inches over your whole property, and you have to collect it and infiltrate it if you want to develop. And so depending upon your lot size, this could be very difficult, or, as others would say, depending upon your soil characteristics, your slope, and all the rest of those things. So, basically, our letter goes through and talks about some of the concerns that we have. Some of the concerns include the fact that they are trying to apply this not only to discretionary permits, which are the kind that go through the planning commission, but they want to apply it to building permits, anybody who comes in for a building permit. Surprise, 2,500 square feet of new impervious? Guess what, you get to do more and revise your drawings. So that's not going to go over very well. They also have that technical feasibility issue, and we think that the 95th percentile storm is not going to be feasible in our community. An 85th percentile storm, which we currently have in place now under their regs, has been difficult. So increasing that is not going to make anything more viable or easier. And then we have the recurring issue of unfunded mandates. These requirements are not funded by the state. We're going to be facing additional administrative costs, et cetera. They're not covering them. So we do still maintain that they are unfunded mandates. With that, I'll close, and ask if there are any questions.
So basically, they're going to make it virtually impossible for particularly an infill property or a small property to be developed, and I think the one in here that struck me remembering our discussions with the Zodovich property was the potential impacts to the aquifer over a broad swath of the community, where you're, they're going to be forced to infiltrate water into our aquifer that wouldn't have a chance to percolate down naturally, and therefore, we could poison our water supply, pretty much.
They do have an, a partial exemption, and we are in our letter asking for that exemption to be not over, it's like 100 feet from a well, you don't have to infiltrate. We would like to put it 100 feet from our recharge area.
Yeah.
And that's our request in our letter. Whether they honor that or not, we'll see.
Because the recharge area, or the aquifer that passes through the valley is about 600 to 1,000 feet wide, and goes horizontal, or goes diagonally right through the community, starting at the Robinson Bridge and ending up somewhere in the middle of the airport, if I remember correctly, or I guess at the runway into the airport. Something in that vicinity.
Or the Bourbons, yeah.
Yeah, goes right under, out through there. Okay. Well, I think it's a great letter. I have a better close. I think we should tell them that all they're going to do is create more litigation, and we'll probably never get anything done, but maybe that's what the objective is, so. Councilwoman Acosta.
Thank you, Marylyn. Yeah, thank you for writing this letter. I, this is, again, you know, one of those insane overregulations and unfunded mandates. It's just unreal sometimes. But I'm, I know that we will be sending this to the office of Tony Strickland and Kacho Asajian. I'm curious if we should attempt to take it a step further and request meetings with these folks, and really try to lobby them a little bit harder than just sending a letter. And also, I'm curious if you've been in contact with the League of California Cities to see if, you know, you can help, if at all, with, you know, getting more cities on board and, you know, making this a stronger front as a group.
Well, we have tried in the past to talk to the League of California Cities about this issue. They don't seem, for whatever reason, to come out particularly strongly on this, and I don't understand why. In the past, we had, went together with the SSC, the Stormwater Committee of local agencies, and they are dealing with the state permit, but they had no interest in the Region III codicil to the permit, it's not really codicil, but this section, which is going to fit in with that permit, because they're not really focused on Region III. So they weren't really interested in taking this up. The Assemblymen and the Senator have been helpful in the past, and responsive, and willing to argue our case, and so we did feel it was appropriate to let them know about this. And, you know, we, we could pursue, trying to meet with them on this issue.
I would, I really genuinely would, if, you know, I have a personal relationship with, at least with Kacho, and I know the mayor does as well. You know, if you need to bring any of us in, I think that that's fine. I think that really, that's what it's going to take, is not just sending a letter, but really trying to lobby for this to really show what large impact it has. And then on my end, with my contact at the League, I'll try to see if I can get some information, I'm, in regards to getting some action items put on their next policy committee meeting for utilities, so, in Public Works.
How did you, what was the reaction from other cities in the, in the zone, in the region?
This is the result of a joint effort, which we all kind of were forced into when the original requirements came out, I think it was 2008, from the regional board to us. They had these watershed goals that we knew we could never meet, and it would cost 300,000 plus to even get a consultant on board to try and look at it. And so, you know, we were kind of up a creek without a paddle. And then the regional board stepped in and said, "Well, we'll help you with this." So they helped us for two years, and they got some funding, and they did this analysis, but at the last minute, they threw some things in there that we weren't anticipating, including the 95th percentile, including a tiered program at the 5,000 square foot level, and the 2,500. We, municipalities are not in favor of the 2,500, municipalities are not in favor of infiltrating 95%, 95th percentile. Overall, if we could do without these requirements, we would. So no, there's not a lot of, you know, support for this on the, on the local level.
So basically, everybody's writing a letter like the letter we're writing. Okay. Any other questions? And I move the staff recommendation, send the letter.
Oh, we have people here to speak, sorry.
Yep, anybody here to talk about this? Ah, come on down, a couple. Sorry about that, almost cut you guys off.
Marylyn and Council, yes, the main one I came over to talk about, my, my favorite friend. About a year ago or something, something came up on the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and everybody was saying, "Yeah, let's, let's get together and work this all out, and life will go on." Well, I think here's your answer. I'm from the government and here to help you. The, the item, of course, is, is send the letter, and I will ardently do it. I might, letter, if I was writing it, I thought back of a, I believe it was a Colonel, surrounded by the German army, and they sent a letter in for surrender, and he wrote the word back nuts. So that would be my reply to the whole thing. But I think the letter's a, a good way to go. It's, I wish there was a way to make it stronger, but it's blackmail any way you look at it. You want to play here, well, you got to do this. I thought it was very interesting, the concept of taking. I felt a lot of this stuff has benefited, to the fact that your, your home or your property is your castle, and it's getting where it's really tough to do anything with it. And again, if you had a real tough soil, you know, how much acreage would you have to have to make a 2,000 square foot house that would absorb all the water off of the roof from the driveway? You know, it's, it's really, doesn't make any sense to me, never did. When they first come out with this stormwater thing, right away, I read a lot on it, and this, I just keep saying, "It'll never work." They keep saying it, you know, long enough, you're going to start to believe it, in things what they're working on. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. I hope you're going to talk about the hospital. Throw that in.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Jim Dixon, 200 East Laurel. From 1978 to 84, I was public works director here, and in 84, I started my own business, been designing properties in Lompoc since then. I won't duplicate what Stacy has said, but I want to add some perspective. I did some calculations. How do we apply this, these numbers? And I looked at the city hall site from Ocean to Cypress, C to D Street, and I said, "How much water are we talking about?" Well, that storm Stacy talked about, that 1.7 inches, one storm would fill this room about 14 feet tall, fill the whole room. One storm. The regional board is saying, "You shall hold that, you'll, you'll dig a hole, dig a pit, hold that on your site, and then percolate it into the ground." That's one storm during the winter. We get several storms. In fact, we get an average of 13, 14 inches of rain a year. So maybe four, or five, or six times that amount of water on the city hall site would have to be dealt with. And the regional board, in their infinite wisdom, I'd like to say something stronger, has said, "Thou shalt put that into the ground." So, let's assume we're going to put it into the ground. What's going to happen? Perhaps five years down the road, guy across the street is noticing some mold on his walls because it's a moisture situation. Perhaps the guy over here, his basement was always dry, or, or underneath the house, now it's wet a little bit. And maybe the guy over here, because of the saturation of the water underneath his foundation, and that expansion and contraction that takes place during the year, maybe his house is starting to settle. And then the event that we all worry about, what happens when we have an earthquake, that seismic event, because now we have artificially, artificially raised the water table locally. And they talk about liquefaction. And liquefaction is when the pressure of the earthquake and the poor pressure in the soil causes the building to sink. Those are all real possibilities. And, and the regional board is asking you to implement this, to force development, to comply with this requirement, to put all this water in the ground, and it won't be here, it'll be across the street in the next project. Where's the liability of the city? Certainly, us as an engineer have a huge liability, but what about the liability of the city? That's something to think about also. What about the safety of everybody else? I mean, this, this isn't a minor issue. When I talked to Larry this morning about this, he said, "This will end development in the city." Well, it won't quite, because there's always a price you can pay to build that project. But the project across the street was built 10 years ago under a different set of standards, and, and it didn't anticipate this additional water that the state is forcing you to force into the ground unnaturally. It, it's not a joke. It's, it's here today. The issues the state keeps imposing on us are building, and building, and building, and this isn't going to work. It's going to cause real problems. It won't happen today, but five, 10 years down the road, and it'll be too late. This is what you're forced with. So, yes, the letter is good, no, it's not strong enough. I think all of the, this, this is going to apply to the whole region, from Monterey down to Carpinteria, every city, every city. I think the cities need to get together, I think they need to talk to the regional board, and I think they need to be prepared to take legal action to protect your liability, because this is idiotic, what they're trying to impose on us. Thank you.
Anyone else? I agree with you 100%. And my favorite one is the, the second floor that they're putting on the hospital building. Even though the footprint of the building didn't change, they're now digging a percolation basin to deal with the water off the second floor of the existing building, because you disturbed it, and it's now a new building, and you're trying to make percolation tests that'll make that water go into the ground. And it just amazes me. Yes, matter of fact, could we just sue them now and get it over with? Can we? No, they haven't made a decision. You can only sue them once they make a decision, right?
Do we want to address that?
Yeah, actually. Yeah, actually.
We currently have, when this came about in 1998, we and they imposed, started to impose these requirements on us, and this is a continuation of the same requirements. Basically, what has evolved out of that, that set of requirements. We filed a petition to the state board protesting this, and we were the only one that we could get in the whole region to go along with it and file one. We were also, maybe there was one other who tried, but they didn't make the deadline. So, we're the only one who has a valid petition at the state board. We have requested that it be held in abance, and it is still active in their inabance, which we might be able to resurrect and/or amend as this has changed, because that didn't involve 95th percentile, because that's a new thing. So, we do have that. I think, you know, Joe can talk to exhausting our administrative remedies, but I think that was our intent there, to get to the state board, have this heard, and once you've done that, then you've opened that door. It is expensive, I think, and that's one of the reasons why we tried to get the other communities to go along with us. It may change now, maybe they'd be interested now.
Yeah, that is really, really horrible.
What you're doing tonight, or what's before you tonight, is a first, one of the first steps that you'll have to do to be able to reserve your ability to do that petition if you want. So, you don't need to make a decision tonight whether or not you want to file a petition, but it would be an expensive undertaking.
So, with stopping all development in Long Poak and having the place sink into the ground? We might have friends by then. Okay. Thanks. All right. I'm still ready to move the recommendation that we, is recommended that, I recommend that the city council review the attached, review the attached draft letter and have me sign it and send it.
A second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Great letter, Stacy. All, please vote. And that passes 5-0. Brad, you want to just do these as a lump, because they're both the same thing?
I brought them both.
Yeah, just kind of pile them together.
Mayor, councilmembers, I will be presenting these together. Just a little bit of explanation. The reason I have two different staff reports is primarily because the fact of the successor agency to the RDA is governed by, is a separate legal, not legal, but a separate entity from the city council. The housing successor agency is just a component of the city. So, to make it clear, I propose to have a successor agency resolution to approve the budget for successor agency, and a regular city resolution to approve the housing budget. The numbers that are in both of these reports are derived directly from what was presented to the Oversight Board and has been approved by Department of Finance. The only exception to that is the fact that, since we have a one-year budget, and the ROPS that were presented to Oversight Board is only a six-month period, I just extrapolated what was approved for January, July through December, and assumed that a like-type activity would be presented and approved for January through June. Having said that, the numbers that are in here are based on the $250,000 administrative allowance that were allowed, as well as all the enforceable obligations that are on our ROPS. For the housing side, it includes the, what was on the ROPS, allowing us to utilize our reserve funds to pay for administration of the housing program as it is. As the housing program gets moving along, and we received, we start to receive repayments, it will become more of a revolving loan program where it will be a self-sustaining activity. Having said all that, I would like, like to just suggest that we pass these two resolutions to allow finance to put the budgets for these two into the existing two-year budget that exists for the rest of the city.
Are there any questions? Anyone out there that wants to do some public comment on this? There are still some people here, for those of you who are still watching us at home. Okay, back to the council. I looked, I looked at these at some considerable length and sat down with Brad, because I was confused about why they were two, and I'm comfortable that we should approve these and go forward, because it's just the implementation of what we've previously done and what the committee did. So, if there's no other discussion, can we have consolidated motion, or we didn't do one at a time? Okay, I'd accept a consolidated motion by reading the two together. Anybody want to take that on? Councilmember Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the city adopt Resolution Number SA0212, approving a budget for the successor agency, and adopt Resolution Number 580212, approving budget for the housing successor agency.
And a second.
So moved.
And is there any discussion? Seeing none, can we vote, please? That passes 5-0. Do we have any written communications? None. Do we have any, anybody else want their last crack at oral communications?
Honorable Mayor of City Council, Nicholas Gonzalez, resident. You've already made the decision, so this is a little late, but several, one, two, three of you at least, were not on the council when some of these documents were submitted, and two of you were there partially. I would like to suggest that you read these. This is called a CAPERS, which is the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Read it, and you make your decision as to if you feel the county's reports were adequate or not adequate for what resulted in Long Poak. Thank you.
And in addition to this, that Mr. Gonzalez has given us, there's a set in the file cabinet in the council office.
Is that what we approve annual?
Nick, is it annual or two-year? I don't remember. Annual, okay. I know I actually read it all once. Council requests comments and meeting reports. We haven't been able to report for a while, and I got reimbursed for going to a meeting, but I honest to goodness don't remember where I went. I got some mileage for it. So, I went somewhere and got some mileage, but it's a ways back, and I've probably been to, it was 50 events last time, so it's probably 70 now, so there I reported. Who wants to start next? Councilmember Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. I, there's stuff, but I'm too tired. I just wanted, the one thing I did want to note is that there was supposed to be four meetings a year for the Policy Committee, Cleveland California Cities, that I'm a part of the Community Services Policy Committee, and the third meeting was actually canceled. There were action items, but they felt that it wasn't substantial enough to necessitate the cost for cities to travel to Sacramento, so we were able to save on that and just get some email updates instead of having that third meeting. So, the fourth meeting I will be attending is at the annual conference in September in San Diego. Thank you.
Councilmember Martner.
No meetings to report.
Councilmember Starbuck.
I'm going to have a happy flower festival.
Councilmember Lingle. I know you got a couple.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing that caused the city any money, but on the 15th, I attended a meeting with community customers and caring, held in Santa Maria. I was a real nice fundraiser for them. And, let's see, on the 16th, I attended the Queen's Coronation at the Elks Lodge.
Okay. We've got all those. So, the Long Poak City Council will adjourn to a regular meeting at 7:00 PM, except maybe earlier, on Tuesday, July 3rd. Thank you for your endurance.